Dot that, but you should where's your.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Grace Molson, President. I believe everyone is present.
Okay, so let's call the meeting to order. Let's do the flag salute. Flag salute.
Please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the.
Of the United States. And to the republic which stands there. One nation under God.
Okay, so there was no action taken in closed session. So now we're going to go over some very. Protocols.
Yeah, um, we, what we plan to do tonight is we plan to provide to follow up with our Board of Trustees to the direction that you gave us at our last meeting, which we needed to have time with you to go deeper about reopening, to provide more specific information about the types of educational programs and schedules that it would take with reopening, and we are prepared to do that tonight. The thought is that we would start with that report of information and then turn it to you for questions when we finish. And then we do have some public comment that we would bring after the board has had time to ask us some questions. So the thought is that I'll review the protocol. And after we've gone through the, after we've gone through the report and you and the board has had time to ask some questions or discuss some of the areas.
All right. Thank you, Karen. All right, so Karen, did you want to go over the session goals?
Yes, so what, what, what we're going to do is we have pulled together a presentation that's based on information that we put in the addendum along with new information that we have received because every day that goes by, there's more information that we're getting and we want to provide the most recent information for our board for questions and discussion later this evening. So Qui Bach, I'm going to ask that you bring up the presentation and then I will review the goals that President Molson asked me to do. Okay, and let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And I know that I'm going to, I'm not sure if our audience can see the whole slideshow. I want to make sure that they can because of what I'm not seeing right now, but that's okay. So here we go. So here, here's what our plan is tonight. That will be updating the board about planning elements that we will present about the educational program with safety and scheduling considerations that we will also update you on about, about the home distance learning program that we currently have 200 and we currently have 248 students that parents have expressed interest in. And then we would like to receive board direction tonight in terms of moving forward if in fact we're ready to do. So let's go ahead and now move to the next slide. And the goal, the overarching goal that we have stayed on point is that really our goal is to reopen on August 13th in a safe, equitable and caring matter and that there are four focus areas that we've been really working on to come through with. One is that we want the learning to be high quality, safe and nimble so that it can adapt through unforeseen change, given the pandemic and other conditions. Secondly, very important that we're providing staff with the time and opportunities for ongoing planning and professional growth. Three, that we're offering educational options in person blended and home distance learning depending on what the conditions will allow. And fourth, that there is systems responsibility for each child that we're serving in terms of growth and achievement. The children's responsibility are staff and parents. So on the next slide, you'll see here is just a current landscape to share with you. As we began this journey in early March, there is currently no vaccine. We do have increasing COVID-19 cases in the region and more specifically in Galt. And there are areas related to testing and tracing that are very, very important to have in place with county health in order to reopen. Fourth is that social distancing and gathering restrictions continue, and we know that the governor took some steps yesterday that have tightened things up with businesses in terms of how businesses have reopened based on the number of cases that are happening in our state. And what is, is beginning to happen that is in some districts, districts are, some districts are beginning to announce that they're looking to reopen through distance learning. So in our board packet, in our board packet, there were some addendum items that we included in there that were very, very specific and detailed. One of the things that we included was a progress update related to five areas that our plan involves. One related to health and safety, two, looking at instruction and programs, the third facilities and operations, the fourth communication and collaboration, and the fifth policy. And board members, what I'd like to do is just, I'm going to have Qui kind of walk through these slides. I'm not going to go into detail now because I know that you have seen the detail and, and our audience, the total, the detailed report is online if you've not seen it in terms of the action plan. But if we could go to health and safety first, so we can see the elements related to health and safety. These are six areas of our progress that we have been working on any from personal protection equipment to collaborating, collaborating with our county health. Area two, which is the next slide, is in the area of instruction programs and support services. We do have committees while working separately are also working to coordinate efforts. And you also will see on this slide that we're looking at scheduling, learning management, and also expanded learning. Area three. Okay, in our progress update plan that was included in the board packet and is online in the area of facilities and operation, we had updates and next steps related from areas to cleaning and sanitizing to even looking at technology, cybersecurity repairs and replacements when we need to prepare for anything and everything. Area four. The fourth area that we are working on is in the area of communication and collaboration. That's happening through district committees. It's happening as we work with our employee unions. And then as we are rolling information out in different ways from our website to our email to our blackboard voicemail system to using Twitter and Facebook. Area five, next slide is in the area of policies, how it is that we're looking at budget liability to contract language to also the state is requiring a learning continuity and attendance plan by September 23rd. So again, in a nutshell, in a nutshell, you know, all systems are go right now in order of what we're needing to do to reopen. And in addition to what I provided to the board to provide updates of where we are with things, we also are looking at educational program and schedules. Our Director of Curriculum Claudia del Toro Anguiano and has, has been working along with other staff very hard to look at how we can be nimble and provide different options of how to support the learning of children depending on the conditions. So Qui, if you could go to the next slide, please, and our Director of Curriculum is going to start with the overview.
Thank you, Karen. So, so the goal remains the same. And the goal is to open all of our schools on August 13th following health and safety guidelines that are provided by the County of Sacramento and the State of California. So we are considering the, the five models that you see in front of you, all again based on public health and public feedback. If you go to the next slide, Qui, this explains each of the educational models a little bit further. You've heard us talk about this before, so I'll just quickly remind the group of what each of these models look like. I do want to highlight before I go through each model that we added a model, that's the orange model that we are labeling blended based on input that we received from parents and some of the questions that you posed last time. We felt that it was important to add that blended model again for, for clarity. So we're looking at those five models with the first one being of course the online, that would be five days per week. That is something that we became familiar with at the end of the last school year. Then we have a blended model. Some people call this the A B model. This would involve having children on campus two days per week and doing three days online. We have talked to you a lot about the modified traditional, and this is the model that most of our staff, our administrative staff has spent a lot of time exploring and trying to see how we would make this work. So the modified traditional would house or would hold all of the children on campus five days a week, but in a limited format. So instead of having a full day, the day would be eight to possibly 1 P M. For the primary children, so TK three, it would involve spending their entire time with their teacher. However, for children in fourth through sixth grade, it would involve breaking or dividing the group in half and having only half of the children in front of the teacher for about two and a half hours per day. The remainder of the time, the other half of the children would, or the same time, I should say, the other half of the class would be working on extended learning activities with, with a staff member. And there would be a short break in which we would quickly sanitize the, the classroom and it would involve a transition. So the group that started with the extended learning teacher, that group would then join the the mainstream teacher or the teacher of record and they would provide, or they would receive direct instruction from their teacher. So again, the modified traditional is what we have been talking to you about is, it's the one that we have explored the most based on, on feedback. You know, parents want children at school. Staff also felt that it was important to have children at school. So the best way that we thought we could do this was by doing a modified traditional. The traditional model, of course, all of you know this because this is what we've always had, five days a week with their own teacher from eight to 2:30. And based on parent input and feedback, the distance learning option has been, or is still being developed. So this would involve parent choice, basically, if a parent opted to have their child participate in this program, then it would be up to the, the parent and, and the, the child would then follow the, the path created for that program. So those are the five educational models that we have been exploring this whole time. If we go to the next slide. We thought it would be important as a way to face in the reopening of our new school year. We are exploring ways to have to, I should say, to provide staff with time in August to strengthen the distance learning model that we have created so that we have a strong start to the school year. We're also thinking that it's important to create time sometime in August again for the children to come face to face with their teacher to start building that relationship. I think it, it would be a little bit challenging to start and, you know, working with children if we can't do it face to face to start working with children online without meeting the teacher. So we're trying to again, prepare for all the models and trying to come up with options that would provide a smoother return for the children. So we thought again, that if we provide time for, for the kids to have a small amount of time with their teacher, then the teacher could guide them on, hey, these are the new routines. This is what's new for the school year. Here's how to use Google Classroom and things like that. We also thought that it would be important to provide time for staff to create a, a standalone emergency type of, of plan, like a 10 day plan in the event. Again, you've, you've heard us talk about this last time. If we needed to close one class or one cohort, we want to do that within 24 hours and then be able to start a distance learning program, I'm sorry, 24 hours after that. So we, for us to be able to do that, then we need to have a set of online lesson plans ready to go by every teacher. If you go to the next slide. Karen, I'm not sure what you would like me to highlight on this slide.
Sure, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and I, I'm just at this point going to just touch on some things that builds on what Claudia del Toro Anguiano brought up is that we do think going slow to go fast is really important. The, you know, what it is that our staff will need to be very familiar with, not only safety, but some of the delivery of learning, especially when children are on campus or even if they are doing 100% distance learning depending on the conditions, it's very important that we look at their training needs to be able to do that. So that could mean that, you know, we're looking at maybe again, some, some types of training that could take place in August, either before August 13th or if in fact it was needed to change the starting date. I mean, there are just things to think about. And, and again, we do know that we started with, you know, 75% of our, of our, our employees pretty much and parents seeking day, a daily model. And that is where we put a lot of time and energy. But again, conditions have been changing. And so that's why, again, we looked at adding a blended model that may be where we would start. If in fact it's safe enough to bring our children back in that way and/or possibly start with distance learning if we, if we needed to do that based on, on direction from, from county health. So on the next slide, on the next slide, here are some examples of sample schedules. This is, is a sample schedule to give board members a feel for the transitional blended reopening model. This is where not 100% of the children are at school. This is an example of where perhaps half of the students are there on Tuesday and Thursday morning. And then Wednesday and Friday, the same students are doing distance learning. And then a second group of students that would come Wednesday and Friday and then Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, they would be doing distance learning. And then Mondays would be a day that would involve distance learning, maybe small groups of students actually coming to school and/or time for teachers to do some work to get ready for the week. But Qui, if you can slide that schedule over so we can see more of the sample schedule, please, if, if you're able to do that.
Karen, I do have this presentation in another format. I can change it. However, most people in the chat box are telling me they can see it.
They can see it. Okay, so I, I, I can see it from my hard copy to my left here too. So I just would say in this model, the children are at school from, let's say, 7:45 to noon. There is a staff lunch from 12 to 12:40 and then from 12, 12:40 to 3:15. That's in the afternoon time where teachers are supporting children that are not at school doing distance learning, where they're working with other teachers, where again, we're spending the time that we need to get those classrooms clean. So this is, this is not, you know, again, this is just a sample schedule. It's not hard and fast, but it gives the, our board gives you a sense for what a model would look like if not all of the children were coming every day. This is similar to what our high school district in Galt is looking at to start the year if in fact they don't start with distance learning depending on health conditions. So let's just go through the next few slides here, Qui. This was an example of the daily schedule where children would be socially distanced. And we did a breakout on this to get, give you a sense for what it would look like by grade level or grade span. This is a model and, and our Director of Curriculum had touched on it. If you can go to the next slide, because I'll use this as an example. And what, what really the daily model that we were looking at would have all children on campus socially distanced, it would involve the use of, of spaces that aren't normally always used for instruction to make it work. Half of the day is related to core learning and half of the day is related to extended learning. And then in these models, Qui, you can go to the next slide also. In these models, and there also then is the, the time for teachers every day to have time to work together to plan together. And this is where City of Galt could be working with us to provide after school services along with our ACEs program for some of our students. So this too is somewhat of a shortened day than what we've known it, but it's a way for us to, both models, the blended model and this one are, are building time into the week so that we can get things cleaned up and that there's time for teachers to plan and collaborate and also to support children that are not at school. And I'll go to the next slide, please. So if I could share, I know that we'll come back to this also, is that we also right now and later on in our, our presentation to our Board of Trustees is that we will be talking about our home distance learning program. That is another option that parents, you know, we want to be able to get registration possibly going on that next week along with an informational session. But know that that is something that, you know, we would like to move forward with. So one of the things that we have stayed steady on and actually had worked through prior to the pandemic was really looking at equity when it comes to learning and how we can look at inclusion and access so that we have the best possible programs for each and every learner. So there are five areas that we're going to provide some updates and clarification for the board before we go to discussion. And I'm going to transition to the next slide and our Director of Curriculum in terms of priority standards.
Thank you, Karen. So today was the first of several meetings to come in which I had the pleasure of meeting with 19 teacher leaders representing our preschool, intermediate grades, primary grades and our middle school. And basically the, the goal of this team is to develop a planning guide that can assist teachers with the planning for the first trimester. We want to make sure that we have a plan in place that would provide guidance on what the first two weeks of school could look like and that would provide guidance on prioritized key standards and how to compact standards. Something important to us is that we will focus on the, the depth of instruction rather than on the pacing. Important for us is also that we will stick to grade level content and instructional rigor and to provide guidance again on accommodations, scaffolding strategies, and to try to exclude remediation because I think that if we focus on remediation, then, then children will never have a chance to, to catch up. So again, today was the, the first of several meetings to come. I look forward to, to the work. And as you see on that slide, we're trying to address the unfinished work from last year while planning for uncertain times. So it's, it's quite a challenge, but everyone that, you know, showed up this morning was, was ready for the challenge and we're ready to meet again next Thursday. was, was ready for the challenge and we're ready to meet again next Thursday.
Right, in the next slide, I know we'll go into special education. Our director of educational services, Donna Whitlock.
Thank you. Well, in each of the reopening models, we know that for students with IEPs, those, all of those models bring many additional considerations to plan for. And our, a team of special education teachers and specialists have been meeting with district staff and our special education coordinator, Kuljit Najjar. And they've been consistent at monthly meetings. Some of the considerations that, and, and thoughts that are coming from that meeting, I'd just like to share briefly with you tonight. First of all, and first and foremost are the considerations for mainstreaming. Our teachers know that, you know, they have, they have the instruction that they have with their, their students in the classroom, but it's still important that there are mainstreaming opportunities for their students. And what does that look like in these models, especially, you know, looking at health and safety guidelines? Another one is, is that a suggestion is that our special day classes, that in some of the model that's blended, that they would remain with their special education teachers for the extended learning option instead of going into the mainstreaming with the, with the other students. That way it would give them more time with their, with their case manager. Some other suggestions that teachers brought forward was that they would like to have additional time, for example, before school starts, because there's a lot of planning and communication that needs to be done with parents and IEP teams. Another question that was brought up was the pullout versus the push-in to provide the specialized academic instruction. They talked a lot about the in-person, on-campus instruction. If we went to distance learning, depending on health and safety, would it be, would it be safe and would we be able to still meet with small groups or individually with some of our students on IEPs? IEPs now, just recently now have a distance learning plan requirement to be included in their IEP. And so our teachers will be needing to work with families who are not only requesting possibly the home distance learning option, but in the, in the case that we may have to move to school closure or the home, the distance program for all students, we need to make sure that it provides, some parents are provided with input on those discussions. So this is not, this is not a decision-making group. This is a group of teachers and specialists and leaders that care very deeply for the children that they serve and want to make sure that in all of these models that we've looked at, they want to make sure that the needs of their, of their children on IEPs are taken, are, are taken care of.
So again, the next slide is related to our, our children who are English language learners. Donna Whitlock, if you would provide a, just a summary, please.
Just a summary and the, the four bullet points that you see here. The first, the first two are part of the plan that regardless of our models and even as a distance learning models, all of our English learning need to be daily integrated and designate designated English language development. We need to be really cognizant of the educational needs of our newcomers. Those are children with little, little or no English proficiency and those also need to be addressed. We have our bilingual community outreach assistance and they're going to be coming, it's going to be really important, they continue to ensure that homeschool communication and connectivity for our families. And number four, just, we do have a trend, a transitional bilingual program at Valley Oaks and it will be continued to be offered in this new year.
So then when we look at preschool and school readiness.
Okay, the first, the first point here on the slide is that we, and you'll look down to number three, is that our state preschool program is mandated and we follow the guidelines from the Department, California Department of Education. And we are still waiting for them to clear, give clear guidance. I may have that for you next week on reopen of our state preschool programs. But our preschool director Kuljit Najjar has been working with area preschool directors considering reopening considerations. And she met with the team of educators from Fair Sight on number three. And those three options mirror the districts, district options as well. And lastly, Ms. Najjar has prepared a parent communication and a feedback just to, to let our preschool families who have either registered or in the process, they're, she's updating them, letting them know that we will be providing them with updated information as it comes into us.
And I know that at our last board meeting, yours, there was a survey that you reported in regards to preference of families and it included some specific information about the home distance learning program. If you would please provide an update to our board about home distance learning.
We now have a total of 247 students and counting because we're getting phone calls daily from families. And I have been telling all families who have called that we are working on rolling out our plan for our home distance learning model. We're going to be rolling it out on our website. We'll be sending out some blackboard calls. But the week of July 20th, we are planning a virtual informational meeting. We are, at this moment, I'm working on an informational frequently asked questions and FAQ for the home distance learning model that will be posted on our website. And we have created a, the home distance learning request form. One thing to note about this home distance learning program is families must have their children already registered for school in the Gault Joint Union Elementary School District. Another important point is that we are going to be asking and requiring that parents sign a master agreement, because in this model, the parent holds the accountability for participation and work completion. And so we are asking for a strong commitment from parents who select this program to a one-year commitment. At this point, we probably have enough students for, for nine to 10 teachers. We'd like to provide one teacher at least per grade level, but we need the commitment from the parents to remain in this program for the year. And then on the right of the slide, you'll see some of the, the specifics about the instruction. How is it different from the, the distance learning from the, from the spring that we were, kind of was sprung upon us? It includes many of the same components, except that these teachers will have the, the materials, the time, the planning, and this will be their only focus. The parent also will have that commitment and focus to support the instruction at home, attend all of the meetings. They will need to set up a space for optimal learning, support the completing the assignments. I do want to mention that per new ed code, that attendance is required daily and it'll be monitored by the, the, the virtual online live presentations. It will be treated just as school and the work needs to be commensurate with what the other students are doing in the classroom. Karen, is there something else that you might want to add to that?
Yes, I just would like to say that I know that we really, really appreciate the survey responses that we were getting back from close to, well, over a thousand families that responded to preferences. And I, the last couple of days, I've been getting more calls from parents that did not indicate that they wanted, that they were interested in this and they now are interested. And so I think from what you've presented to clarify is that we're looking to have an informational meeting the week of July 20th and then it is not too late. We're going to send information out so families still could express their interest and register to participate.
Correct, it is not too late. And then as soon as we have direction, we will make sure to get the information out, communicate with the families in our district.
Right, and again, to make, to make things work for the range of children that we serve, we do have expanded learning opportunities that traditionally have happened after school and maybe that will further transform as we go through. But Qui, if you would please go to the next slide. And Donna Whitlock, if you would go on to extended learning and after-school, please.
Just really, you know, briefly, we, you know, I've been working with our extended learning supervisor, Jennifer Collier, and I'm planning for our ACEs program at our three sites. And then we did meet approximately two weeks ago with the Parks and Recreation Department that provides the STORE program. And they are currently providing an, actually a summer camp. So they're working on their health and safety and social distancing. But they are ready and prepared to provide after-school care, possibly until six o'clock at the schools that do not have ACEs. When asked if they would consider providing the same type of after-school care to the other sites, because we know that the ACEs program always has a waiting list. They said that they would be open to exploring the idea of, of offering STORE at the other sites as well. The other part of the, the extended learning is that our extended learning supervisor has been working with principals that when school starts, we will be doing strengths-based and wellness activities, whether online or in person. We will be including some social emotional learning and strengths-based activities with the, with our kiddos when they get back to school.
Okay, and as we're looking at on-campus learning, when against it is safe to do it, we are looking at our classroom spaces as well as best transportation. Lois Yon, Director of Business Services, if you would continue on, please, to update our board.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, we have been looking at our classroom spaces and how many students, how many desks can we put in a classroom and socially distance? We had a group of teacher leaders that met with us in a classroom just last Friday. And we had our tape measures and removing desk and furniture around to determine what would be safe. And we determined, basically in our classrooms, most of our standardized, standardized classrooms are sizes. You can fit between 16 to 20 desks in a classroom. Depends on if it's a portable classroom or a permanent building. But most of our, our classes can hold 16 to 20 students in social distance at the six feet. We have ordered Plexiglas shields for Kinder tables. All of our TK and Kinder classrooms, our students sit at tables. And so we have ordered Plexiglas shields that will sit or stand on top of those tables to help social distance, to help space out and block, block germs in the Kinder classrooms.
And Lois Yon, I also, while it's not on this slide, when we look at our students that are learning from a, a computer device at home, we had a number of hotspots that were checked out. But I think that you are also researching some other options that might make it even easier for access and equity when it comes to learning from home through distance. Would you talk about that research that you're doing, please?
We are, we're looking at, instead of checking out individual hotspots, we're looking at actually setting up Wi-Fi towers across the district. We're looking at two to three towers, it's spread out throughout our schools. So that way students, families would be able to access our internet just like they do when they're at school. It will have a greater bandwidth and capacity. They will be able to stream Zoom longer than they can with the Wi-Fi hotspots that they've checked out. We would have better security and monitoring as well if they were checked, if they were logging into our own network through Wi-Fi towers. And so we're in the process with a purchase like that. We have to go through a process of a request for proposal. And so we're looking at posting that within the next week. But we would be able to use the federal emergency funds that we have to help get schools started. And so that would definitely increase Wi-Fi services for our families and our students if we go that route.
Thank you, and I know on the next slide, Qui Bach, that Lois, just an overview of just what's here.
Yeah, just a few pictures. Most of those are in the classroom that I was in with some of our teacher leaders. We, I think in some of these pictures, there were about 23 desks that we started with. We moved some out. You know, there's, we had different discussion, different opinions on how wide pathways need to be or, you know, how close you might be able to put a desk to a phone or, or a doorway. But we had some really good conversations about that. On the far left, that is a picture of the middle school. Our permanent building classrooms at the middle school, they are a little bit smaller. We were able to fit about 20, 22 in those classrooms. They have more cabinet space as well, and so they're a little bit smaller. So we are just, you know, continue to, to look at how many students you can safely fit into a classroom under these circumstances following guidelines.
So not only, I mean, it's just amazing, all of the areas that we're taking a look at. And that also includes how we can safely transport children on buses in times where social distancing and other requirements are coming into play. So Qui, if you could go to the next slide. And Lois, I know that there's a survey that was put out also for our families and special education and also all families.
Yes, we, yeah, we're starting to get the survey information back. So where we know if parents are needing transportation for next school year, so that's good. We'll be calling families that we transported last year. If we don't hear back so that we can get a good count. The guidelines right now are stating that we need to have six feet distancing on the bus. And so one of the models there, the first model you have there is without masks, one student, every other row alternating sides. We tried this out, our transportation supervisor and other staff actually tried this out with balloons on one of our school buses. And that was actually over six feet on that model that only has seven students in a bus. We did a zigzag model that added seven more students on that bus. So we think we can safely social distance 14 students on a bus. Some districts are, are talking about, you know, just knowing that transportation is so important for so many students, especially when you're looking at equity and access. You know, how many, how can you get more than 14 kids on a bus? Especially considering we transported 700 students last year in our district. If you were to require some kind of face covering and you put one student per seat, alternating sides, you could put 24, 28 students in a bus. Not saying that we have made a decision on that, that we are going to require face coverings, but we were just looking at different options of how we might be able to transport more students. If we go with just the 14 students per bus with our current fleet and our current drivers, we would not, we wouldn't even be able to transport 200 students next year. So it's just, it's a huge dilemma how to, how to get students to school that really need that service.
Okay, and, and again, all that it takes, it, it takes our system working together, including the expertise of our school nurse. Donna Whitlock, I know that you are, are working with our, our school nurse. Would you please update the board in this area, please?
Yes, I've been in communication with Maria Carbonell and she is our district nurse. And our high school district nurse also has been in communication with us. And we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. And we will sit down with our high school nurse, our elementary nurse and our retired district nurse, Marty Cuevas Ortega, who's with R X Staffing and has a lot of expertise. And we are looking at some health, student health and safety protocols. We looked at several documents. The documents we have, the California School Nurses Association Recovery Plan Resource Guide that we've used. We looked at our state document. We also have been looking at the, the document that our county office of education, those considerations for reopening student with safety. And so we have a draft and we will further revise that draft and the protocols tomorrow. And then as we, as we develop that, we will be presenting it also to the school board. But our goal is that when school opens, we will have a student health and safety protocol and we will share with parents and also with all staff members.
And if we could stay on this slide, I would say this, that Dr. Casiri, who was at our last board meeting, that again, as we recall, she brought up that, again, she will, is available to review our protocols and other procedures, which, which we are reaching out for. That's why I'd like our board to know that. which we are reaching out for. That's why I'd like our board to know that, that, you know, we are working with public health, you know, regarding areas that we're looking at. And I want to say this before we go to the next slide, just hold quiet just for a minute here, is that from day one, when we began looking at reopening for August thirteenth, and this work started, it never stopped, really. Once we closed, you know, we started looking at, well, how, you know, what is it going to take to reopen? And then we were very mindful of wanting to be data-driven in terms of how we would reopen. And that meant surveys, parents, teachers, students, more than one survey that has gone out to parents. And working with committees and then striving to come up with more than one model so that we are nimble and prepared for everything and anything. And I want to acknowledge our staff, our community members and other agencies that have been working around the clock for these different areas pertaining to health and safety, instruction program and supports, facilities and operations, communication and collaboration and policy. All of these things are in motion so that we can reopen and do much better than what happened when we closed, because we've learned so much and we would be much more prepared. And again, we were looking at a daily model with social distancing as what possibly that could look at based on the data that we had at the time. But again, we knew that with changing conditions and then feedback from others, that that model in itself is not enough. And that is where you have seen an evolvement of the continuum of phases so that we can be nimble. And the next slide shows is a public document. It's through the Sacramento County Public Health COVID-19 Dashboard. You know, we look at this every day. I do have to say right now, I'm looking at it pretty much every morning. And what we can see on here is what it's looking like in our region and then specifically in Galt in terms of the number of cases, the cases by age group as well. And this is without schools being open right now. And just again, wanting, you know, our board to, again, if you haven't seen this dashboard, this is something that is, it's actually on our school district website as well. So this is what we're looking at for next steps. Go to the next slide, Kawaii, please. Is that we want to continue preparing for anything and everything from the educational program phases continuum that our Director of Curriculum presented. And if you would note in that, we have an online model for when health conditions have us pull back from opening our schools. We have a blended model with half of our students at school. At one time, we have a model that is another transitional model that's a daily model with social distancing. We are striving to get back to a traditional model when social distancing and gathering requirements are not, no longer there. And no matter what, we're working to provide a home-distance learning program. So again, we want to continue to prepare to, you know, be able to address and be nimble in those different areas. Secondly, the time and training with staff when we reopen is really paramount. Paramount that we do that in August so that when the children either return and/or, you know, are involved with distance learning in some way, that we are prepared to do it safely wherever they are learning from and also, you know, to do it with the highest quality of what we can do. And third, that next step involves communicating where we are with reopening plans again to parents and staff. And we would like to move forward with an informational session and registration for home-distance learning starting next week. We know that we have at least at this time, two-hundred-and-forty-seven or two-hundred-and-forty-eight students that parents have communicated interest. And we would like to put that out and see what the final numbers are so that we can prepare with staffing. So the final slide, the final slide is bringing it back to our Board President and our Board of Trustees. We have done our best to pull together in a presentation format some of the information that we included as addenda, as added items for you to see, but also with new information included in this presentation that we completed as of today with breaking information. So Kawaii, if you could bring us back. And if I'm going to transition this back to our Board President, Board President Malsen.
That was a lot of information, and it was great information. So I'm going to open up to our board members for any questions, comments, and discussion.
Karen, when do we expect further guidance from Sacramento County Public Health officials or the Governor's Office regarding their recommendations or requirements for opening schools in the modified traditional or traditional option?
Yes, well, again, we know that what we're seeing in other regions right now, that county public health has put out information for different regions. We have not gotten that information from Sacramento County Public Health at this time. We understand that we could be getting information in the next day or so related to conditions and data that, you know, can help guide our work in terms of how to reopen in the best way.
I have a question regarding the health and safety issue, just because I didn't really see it in the plan. But so in regards to the nursing situation, have we identified separate locations for children that possibly have COVID-19 versus the normal sick day routines and stuff? I didn't see that in the layout anywhere.
Tom, that will be part of our student health and safety plan. We will be required to have a separate isolation area, whether it's just such a separate area where they can be socially distanced or a room. But we will be addressing that in our protocols. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, because I would expect nurses would still have their average daily traffic.
So I have a question. Along with asthmatic kids, are you guys still going to require masks?
Who?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We're not in public comment. And unfortunately, this is not a public forum right now, or like a town hall meeting. So if you want to make a public comment, please direct your question to Kawaii, and we will get to it at the end of the board discussion. Thank you.
Karen, you were just saying, how many, we have two-hundred-and-forty-seven students. Are they signed up for distance learning?
We have. It is for the home distance learning. We are familiar with a program called Home Study. This isn't quite the same, but yes, it is a program that we would, we want to provide in addition to whatever other model we need to provide, whether it be some type of blended on-campus model to a traditional model without regulations to even, again, if the state, you know, put stay-at-home order in place for families that had their children in the home-distance learning program, they would continue to be served.
We would be asking for a commitment for those Home Study distance learning families for a year.
For a year? And if I'm reading from our matrix correctly, if a student signs up for home distance learning, they still have contact with the teacher twice a week?
They will have daily contact with the teacher, and it will be through virtual live instruction. The virtual live instruction, it would be in small groups. So actually, it could be in a group of twenty students. They'll also have support from instructional assistant if they need additional small group support. But it will be virtual.
I guess I'm kind of wondering how adaptable as a school system we're going to be if we were to move from an A B to distance learning because it's mandated by county health. And, you know, what level of preparation is needed to kind of put this into place?
Let me start, and I'll ask colleagues to help. And I also wanted to share this, I apologize for forgetting to say this. We do have our principals that have all joined us this evening. And I wanted to say this, and then Donna Gill, if you're online and you're able to unmute, I'd like you to speak because I know that there's some things that you shared right now. What our Director of Curriculum had shared at a previous meeting is that we want to be able to, if we needed to revert back to stay-at-home, where it's a hundred percent distance learning or a hundred percent online learning, we want to be able to turn around within twenty-four hours. That's what our goal is. And so what our principals have done is they have, we just started to work together in terms of what those procedures would be so that we would be able to hit that target. Donna Gill, are you able to unmute and talk about, for example, some of the ideas that you had? You had mentioned the storage of some of the Chromebooks that were checked out in bins so that, I'm not sure if you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm unmuted now. What we've planned to do is to, as students come back in August or when students come back, as they return Chromebooks that they checked out during our previous distance learning time, that we would just sanitize them and then put them in tubs by their current teachers so that in the event that a cohort had to quarantine or a school had to close, we could quickly distribute those, redistribute those. There's also been suggestions by our staff that we look at checking out Chromebooks to all of the intermediate students so that they have them for whatever model we choose. So if we did an A B or a split schedule or did distance learning, they would have those always with them. So there are a lot of those kinds of things that we're looking at, things that we could do quickly, having teachers have some emergency lesson plans in place that would allow students to then immediately transition to distance learning while teachers are continuing to prep for that. So we're really trying to be proactive in thinking about the possibility that there might even be, as we return to school, in some kind of hybrid model, that there might be some cohort closures because someone tests positive somewhere. So we're really trying to be proactive in how we're planning for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Donna. Claudia Del Toro Anguiano, I was going to share that you, I think that there has been discussion about maybe some type of, I think you're calling it lesson plans, but some training around or time that teachers would have to prepare for the ten days, building off what Donna Gill said about when we have a quarantine situation.
Yes, and the reason for the ten days is that the quarantine typically would be fourteen days, but it's actually ten instructional days. So maybe rather than calling it an emergency lesson plan, it would be a distance learning package, ten-day package, ready to go, that would be independent of what we are doing in the classroom, but that would be of high rigor, different from what has been provided in the past. So to do that, we need to provide teachers with time to create that so that, again, in the event of a quarantine, whether in a classroom, a grade level, or a cohort, we can do that within twenty-four hours.
I guess a good concern that I have is getting into a reactive mode, which is where we were in March, and trying to provide something that maybe wasn't as effective. And what degree can a school system be nimble enough to interchange back and forth between online to in-person? I just have concerns and want to ensure that there's a level of support in terms of training or, you know, if more time is needed, because obviously with the numbers spiking up the way they are, lots of people are reacting, from the governor to different school districts, you know, throughout California. And we may be forced to, you know, to make a quick decision if we were to move over with an A B and something more drastically comes down the line and hate to see just more distraction than what we're already seeing, you know, that affects learning outcomes.
And if I may, Karen, I think that's where the work of the teachers that I'm meeting with comes in. We know what worked last spring, and we feel that having learned lessons and knowing that some things didn't work as well as we thought, that again, when we, if we have to do distance learning this time around, it would be better based on what we've learned and the collective work that we have. So that's one of the main reasons, John, why we're bringing this team together so that there is no lapse in learning, again, to the best of our ability. But to do that, I just want to highlight to the board, time is needed to do that. So we need to somehow provide teachers with time to be able to plan a solid transition if we needed to go one way or another.
Can you talk a little bit more about protocols? If we were to have this A B schedule and have somewhat of a hybrid model? And I know, you know, some of this was in the worksite specifics plan. I just kind of want to hear it for everyone learning is that the protocol would be that we'll be doing temp checks, temperature checks before they enter campus. And if they have maybe a high temperature, are we going to allow students into schools? Or are they going to be contained, you know, somewhere else? Or what's the thinking on that?
The decision for temperature checks and screenings for students at school has not been made yet. At this point, we were, we had been talking about for students, daily symptom checks will be done by the parent and guardian prior to coming to school. We would be educating parents and guardians on the symptoms and what to screen for before they come to school. For adults, we have also not, have not come to a decision on doing checks at school. We've been talking about daily self-symptom checks prior to coming to work, though, John. So there's a lot of logistics involved when you have five hundred children or even if you have two-hundred-and-fifty children coming onto campus, waiting to get their temperatures checked and see if they're a hundred point four. Also, just using that with the thermometer, you know, the touchless thermometer, you know, is it correct? Were they in a hot car before they got to school? So that's one of the, that's one of the key areas that we're going to be talking about tomorrow. So I will have more information at our next meeting.
It is also an area that county public health may be providing some amended guidance to what was in the document that was published from the Sacramento County Office of Education. I'm understanding that area along with face coverings. There may be some amended recommendations coming out on that for districts to look at.
Yeah, I guess, you know, bottom line, if there is a thread or perception where people do not feel safe, students are not going to learn. And whether it's teachers that don't feel safe. and whether it's teachers that don't feel safe or students that don't feel safe. And and I understand that as a district, we can't foolproof anything from the common cold to COVID, but in light of what we're currently experiencing, really need to flesh out some of these protocols and be as as safe as possible. I know that, you know, some of my colleagues down in Arizona, for instance, and I've seen this article spread where, you know, you've had three teachers that were teaching using masks in the same class and, you know, and they were teaching online and one of those teachers, you know, contracted COVID and so and ended up passing away. And so I think that, you know, we see stories like that. It creates a lot of worry for for folks and again, you know, to what degree can we be, you know, as safe as possible and have healthy people at school, which is near impossible to do, I understand.
I think that for in the face to face, in person instruction, something else besides the protocols, what's going to be so important is the training that our teachers and staff do with the with the students when they come onto campus, just training them in those safety protocols and think, you know, we talked about maybe having smaller groups of students on campus with their parents to help get, you know, create habits and customs so that they're safe.
Yeah, because it goes without saying that there are populations in our school district that need that face to face, that need that consistency, whether it's our our low, you know, our students with with a different language to our special ed, to our primary students that are trying to learn how to read and write. So it's, you know, trying to figure out this balance of doing it right and doing it safe, you know, this is, there are no win. It's like a lose lose situation here for us, unfortunately.
Listen, actually, this is for Cleo. Since we have, you know, potentially all these different learning methods that we're going to have to, you know, employ throughout the year, can you kind of explain to the board what the learning management system that we're going to be using that that kind of ties them all together that maintains that continuity?
And we're still at the starting point, you know, with the that I mentioned, the teacher leader team. Today was the first time that we met, but we did discuss how important it was to have a more consistent distance learning program so that we can provide support to parents, support to children if we're all using the same or more than two similar platforms. Right now, Tom, I can tell you that the most efficient way to to push information out to children to obtain information back from them is through Google Classroom. So I can't tell you right now that's going to be it because I do want to make sure that the teacher teams agree with that, that we have enough support for teachers that still maybe don't feel comfortable using Google Classroom. I can tell you that Google Classroom works much, much better with children in grades four through eight. Third grade can certainly, you know, be trained. It's a little tough to do Google Classroom with Kinder, not that it wasn't done because we had many of our teachers who who did, but the goal, to answer your question, Tom, is to look at one, possibly no more than two platforms that we will use for our distance learning regardless of what phase we're in.
So whether they're in the classroom or home online, that will create that continuity that allows them to transition seamlessly?
Yes, and then we were, yes, we were already doing that, Tom, in some of our intermediate classrooms and most of our middle school. So whenever at times that we had to split the class to do small group, the rest of the children were already working on Google Classroom, you know, with all the resources as the teacher was doing the small group. So we have been using it, but the goal again now is that if as we develop the distance learning plan or the learning guide that we're hoping to create, that again, we will identify Google Classroom as the platform from which all of us will work with or from.
Thank you. Thank you.
This probably goes without saying, but I feel pretty strongly that if we're really serious about having a hybrid model in place that we, as a board or as a system, as a governance team, we need to model model that and modeling that means we need to get away from going to Zoom and having in-person board meetings because it seems a little contradictory that that we're going to be online doing it, having these Zoom meetings and and kind of directing, you know, in-person class, you know, instruction. So I think that's something that we need to look at here at our next board meeting, you know, and if we're not comfortable with it, that speaks maybe to to a lot of maybe our staff's concerns and other people's concerns about having in-person instruction, even though I think we all at heart want that.
Yeah, and John, I totally agree with you on that. I brought that up last month on one of our special board meetings about being in person and that's why, that's why I brought it up because if we can't meet in person as a board, I how can I expect my kids to show up to school? So that was one of the reasons I brought that up last month. That's definitely feels strongly. Now, we meet in person as a board, how can we send kids to school? So thanks for bringing that up.
And I agree with both of you because I know, I mean, I'm pretty sure everyone's seen the article that happened in Santa Clara where they had the administration in-person meeting about reopening schools and they exposed over 40 administrators. And I 100% agree, we can't send our kids and our staff back to school if we ourselves can't hold in-person meetings anymore.
I'm sorry, it's also a good opportunity for us to practice social distancing.
Yeah, totally social distance at a meeting. You still have it on Zoom for all the people at home.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. Yeah, I have a question about lunches if if we can, if you guys are wanting to move on a different part of this. I just think as much as possible, we need to try and prioritize feeding these kids, you know, hot lunches as much as we can, especially if we end up with a blended system where kids are on on campus two days a week. I think there's at least two two solid opportunities where we should be able to try and provide them with a with a hot lunch as opposed to a grab and go. And in addition to that, it was just something that had been brought to my attention by one of the parents and it was in the frequently asked questions and it identified that the fourth through sixth graders would actually be on campus or in class from eight to one and then at one o'clock, they would be dismissed with a grab and go lunch. So I wanted some clarification on that because I know as an adult, I'd get a little grumpy if I had to wait till one o'clock to get a lunch. So I just wanted, so like I said, my first question is, I mean, I'd like to hear from our food service team because they're awesome and I know they do a great job is is what, you know, you know, how much can we possibly feed hot lunches when we can? I think that should be the preference. And then, you know, when is it more appropriate to do a grab and go? And 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 I would like some clarification on that one o'clock feeding time because I have a, you know, I have a sixth grader next year that's going to get hungry.
I can speak to that, Tom. With the one o'clock grab and go meal, there is a snack break time that's built into the midday that students would be encouraged to to have a snack. If we went to the the whole reason why we have the grab a go or a sack lunch right now is just not knowing how many kids we would have on campus at a time. If we did a hybrid model or we did the, you know, the modified traditional model where we had, you know, just half the kids on campus at a time, it would be much easier to social distance in the multipurpose room and to serve hot meals. We're looking at just starting the school year with a grab and go meal for the first couple of weeks, just to to iron out all the procedures. But we too would definitely rather be serving hot meals and the kids eating in the multipurpose room. It just depends on how many kids we have on campus at one time to what, how that, how we can do that.
So if we went to an A B system, there'd be less kids on campus, more distancing and it would be more likely. So that that one o'clock grab and go was then for like full back to regular schedule? I mean, that was everybody on campus was the reason why there was a one o'clock grab and go?
Yeah, and then we have to look at that transition period. It would be much easier if we, yes, if we did the two days on, three days off, three days distance learning, then we would, yeah, we would be able to definitely look at kids eating on campus. An A M P M model would be harder to do that, which I know we're not looking at that anymore. So I think we would be able to do that if we had just half the students on campus. We'd be able to feed them in the cafeteria or outside. It would be doable. But not, we wouldn't be able to feed hot meals or on campus before eight if we had a five day model. We would have to do, we would have to stick with a grab, with a take home meal.
And what would breakfast look like on a five day schedule? Would it be like, weren't you going to do like breakfast in the classroom or something like that?
We were going to do breakfast in the classroom for K three and for eight, they would take home a breakfast with their lunch for the next day. The breakfast and the lunch would be take home in a in a five day model for four through eight.
So those students would have to eat breakfast prior to arriving at school?
Yes, yes, so they would, they would take home their breakfast.
That's a significant change for some of our students.
So would you allow the students to bring their own food? And I just ask because I know I, my kid was always bringing snacks to eat in class during snack time, grown snacks. So would you guys provide that or would they be allowed to bring their own food?
We would definitely encourage children to bring a snack that they would like.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was allowed nowadays to bring your own food. I don't, there's so many, yeah, things unknown. Are there any other talking points?
I'm just going to bring up my personal, it's my frustration of trying to stay up on all this stuff with, like yesterday, you hear of San Diego, LA, a couple other districts saying they, for the month of August at least, are fully going to go with like distance learning, but then today I hear, actually before our closed session started, I was watching news up in, I think it was Rescue School District is going to go like regular school, like a regular school schedule. And then I read an article this morning about Orange County and they're recommending they go to a regular school schedule. So it's frustrating hearing all the different districts doing different things. San Joaquin County, I'm hearing that their county office of education has strongly suggested that they go to a distance learning model for the month of this of August and then they'll reevaluate at the end of August and see where they're going to go for September. It's been, it's been like frustrating because you read one thing one day, the next day you hear something different and it's, it's like a slinky. It's like, you know, like which way do we go? So that's my frustration.
And Wes, to feedback on that, something came through with Watsonville, I don't know the name of their school district. That's, I believe, in Santa Cruz County, which isn't even on a watch list and they just went to all distance learning. That came through about two hours ago. So, yeah, it's confusing.
Well, I guess that's the beauty of local control, right?
Nobody knows our kids better than we do.
I would be interested to hearing some public comment to get kind of a sense of where maybe some of our community is feeling at this point.
Yeah, if everyone is kind of ready, the discussion's signed down, I think we are, we can move on to public comment.
All right, so I want to clarify something that Board President Mollson brought up earlier for our public who've joined us tonight. We have a big audience of participants who are listening in and we're very appreciative that you joined us tonight is we do have a protocol in our district in terms of how we have supported public comment as we moved into having meetings this way when we're in a pandemic emergency. And I want the board to know that I have noted, you know, some of the feedback that you gave and we'll see what we can do, you know, for our next meeting here. But what we do is we take public comment in three different forms. One in regards to emails that community members send to Quaybuck by noon the day before a board meeting. We also receive public comment from those who are on teleconference and those that are joining us by phone. And I thought, Board President Mollson, what I would do is start with our email public comment that that we received by yesterday at noon. And then we have nine members that have have informed us that they want to make public comment at this time, so I thought it would go to them next. And then we are at around, I'm going to say eight 30 at this point, and I'm just looking, Board President Mollson, for your direction on this. Keep it at three minutes per comment at this point?
Yes, three minutes on it.
Okay, all right, and we're around, we said we are at, say, eight 30 at this point. I, again, board members, I'm going to start with the emails that Quaybuck received. The first one is from Selena Rodriguez to Dr. Shower and G J U S D, Board of Education. I'm a proud mom of two boys for 10-year elementary. I am also a licensed therapist who works at UC Davis and has a private practice here in town. I have also had the pleasure of volunteering in the classroom of both my children each year of their schooling thus far. I would like to start off this letter by thanking you for the time and energy you have spent in managing this unprecedented pandemic. I understand that no one asks for this, not teachers, students, parents, administrators, faculty or staff. I also understand that this city and district is divided and I cannot imagine the way of this decision-making process. I have my own concerns about readiness and safety to reopen in the midst of our numbers growing combined with the need for our children to have structure and socialization. However, I feel that enough people are addressing all sides of this issue and I'm specifically writing this letter to express my concerns of a schedule detail if schools are actually able to reopen. I noticed that on the tentative schedule, fourth through eighth graders do not receive a lunch while on campus until one o'clock when they'll take it home. This may be overlooked and overlooked detail due to the drastic details that are needed to be worked through. However, if schools are able to reopen, I would like to express concern over this. I would cite studies discussing food insecurities and general hunger on the impact of behavior and attention span, and I'm happy to do so should you like. However, to me, it is simpler than that. I would imagine that almost all parents and teachers understand how children that are hungry struggle more with behavior issues and maintaining their attention span. While the schedule states that food will be sent home, this truly means that fourth through eighth graders would be eating closer to 1:30. I love my children with my whole heart and they are very well behaved students. However, I would not wish it on any teacher to have them in their classes every day without getting to have lunch while actually present in school. My children are not unique in this. I've seen the impacts of children waiting for lunch as their attention spans fade and moodiness increases. Children have faster metabolism than we do regularly. A lot of children do not even wake up in enough time to eat a healthy breakfast, which makes the situation even more difficult. I do not understand how the jump occurs between third and fourth grade to assume that fourth graders enough can wait until one o'clock. to assume to assume that fourth graders enough can wait until one o'clock or later to eat. There's nothing in developmental theory that speaks to this nor nutritional recommendations that I am aware of. In reviewing the food guidelines, it seems like a gross stretch to say that this is permissible. Perhaps most importantly, I cannot imagine our teachers having a classroom full of hungry children. We have been so blessed with our teachers at Greer, and I honestly feel like this is setting them up for failure each day from about eleven thirty to one. Looking at it from an adult perspective, imagine being at a five day training and finding out that you start every day at eight and are not dismissed for lunch until one o'clock or later. Some of the best trainers I know at U C Davis regularly allow their classes out by eleven thirty for lunch in order to recharge the brains. While I understand Google is most likely to allow more learning time in class, I strongly believe this goal will not be obtained if children are not eating lunch during your school day. One more paragraph. I understand this is lengthy, but I do feel patiently about this. These problems are not black and white, and I strongly ask that you examine an alternative solution to the scheduling challenge for the school to appropriately nourish the children while they're actively participating in their learning. Please feel free to contact me with any questions or concerns, and I sincerely thank you for your time. The next comment that we have is from Monica Bricksley. Good evening, board members, district administration, teachers, and parents. I'm writing to you all as a parent of an incoming fifth grader and a seventh grader. I have also been a substitute teacher for the district since April of two thousand seventeen. I understand that our reopening date is quickly approaching, and when I had originally completed the parent survey in June, GALT had been holding steady at thirteen confirmed cases of COVID nineteen. And it appeared that despite increased testing, the spread of the virus was relatively controlled in our area. My preference at that time was for full time in person learning with safety precautions in place. I was ready to back, get back into the classroom, support the many amazing teachers in this district that I love. However, at this time of this email, GALT now has two hundred and twenty cases, and a current data for Sack County shows that over the past week, the average daily count of new cases is one hundred and fifty six with one point three deaths per day. The number of confirmed infections is currently doubling every eighteen point four days. As of July thirteenth, there have been five thousand four hundred eighty nine confirmed COVID cases. In Sacramento County, three thousand one hundred seventeen of those cases are currently active, and eighty three people have died. This is not just due to an increase in testing as the positivity rate has also increased. So has hospitalizations. On June first, there were fourteen confirmed COVID nineteen patients in Sack County with eight in the ICUs. On July eleventh, there were one hundred fifty seven confirmed cases in the county with forty seven in the ICUs. It does not appear that our county has a handle on the spread of this virus. And as much as I believe the science that clearly states that masks and social distancing can make a dramatic difference in slowing the spread, these are tools for prevention, not foolproof. These measures will also be almost impossible to enforce among elementary school children, as well as, I would guess, many staff members as well for a variety of reasons. Although it would seem that most children are at low risk for complications of COVID nineteen, it is still unclear what the problem is in the spread of the virus. Children have not been tested at the same rate as adults, and schools in the U S have been closed since the virus started spreading so rapidly, so we just don't have the data. We can look to other countries that have since reopened, but many of these countries have been able to successfully contain and control their outbreaks, so we can hardly make any valid comparisons. It is indisputable that our kids need school. Both of my children are diagnosed with A D H D, and my seventh grader has a five oh four plan and receives speech therapy. They do not thrive in a distance learning environment, and I fear that they will fall further behind if we continue full time distance learning, despite the fact that they they have wonderful teachers who make every effort within their power to make the end of the school year as productive as possible. With that being said, the health and safety of our children, teachers, administrators, and support staff should be the ultimate priority, and our school should only open up to in person classes when the spread of COVID is better controlled and or better treatments or methods of prevention are available, as well as readily available testing with quick results. When a student or teacher comes down with a fever or cough, what happens? Do we have the entire class tested? Who will pay for that, and how many parents are going to consent to that? With the current rate for testing results of up to ten days, what happens in the meantime? From the perspective of a substitute teacher, I am not comfortable at this time spending my days in different classrooms, touching materials that belong to a teacher who's possibly waiting on test results. Many substitutes are retired teachers who may be in this high risk category. I foresee a much harder time finding substitutes during this time. I know that many people will disagree with these concerns. Many people cite the relatively low death rate of this virus. However, COVID nineteen is proving to be much more than a simple respiratory illness. Complications include blood clots, organ damage, permanent lung problems, neurological damage, and more. For every person who dies, there are many more who will suffer long term consequences. Many of our teachers and school staff are at a higher risk of complication, as well as many of our children, including my twelve year old asthmatic son. In conclusion, I stand how many, how very important it is to get children back to school. Their educational, social, and mental well being depends on it. It absolutely breaks my heart that we are in this situation where our children are suffering. However, we have to bring them back as safely and with as little risk to everyone involved as possible. If a solid, safe, and science backed plan cannot be agreed upon by the mid August start date, it's imperative that the district holds off on in person learning until one can be implemented. I would ask that the district and the school board use the advice of scientists and health experts when deciding when to open our schools and not be pressured by politics or scientifically unsupported opinions. Thank you for your time, Monica Bricksley. The third email that we have is from Erin Mundie McCook. I am one of the district school psychologists. I feel so lucky to work for our school district. I was sad to see my first year in the district cut short. I love my coworkers and students, and I desperately want to get back to school. That being said, two of the largest parts of my job are statistical analysis and the maintenance of people's social emotional well being, and I do not think we should be planning to go back to school in person. From a statistic standpoint, as of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty, we have a twenty six percent rise in COVID cases and a fourteen percent rise in COVID deaths since last week in Sacramento County alone. How can we have decided it was unsafe to be in school in March when there were literally, literally thousands of fewer cases? And now we're deciding to go back to school? Additionally, I think it is critical to remember that the main argument for returning to school in person is that so few children die of COVID. If point oh oh one six, one six percent students, children die of COVID, that is approximately one child per campus within our district. Not to mention all the adults who serve those children. Additionally, the death rate is not the only statistic of concern. Many patients who recover from COVID are then left with chronic medical conditions, such as heart or lung failure, heart attacks, and strokes. From a social emotional perspective, the entire psychological community understands and agrees that it's much better for students to be in school and interact with their peers. We all want that. Our profession understands that this is true when school looks normal. However, we are in the midst of a pandemic. Having students in school where they have to stay away from others, wear masks, constantly sanitize, face forward, and not touch each other, not to mention being in an environment where their teacher may be consistently afraid and frustrated is not going to benefit their social emotional well being. Many psychologists believe that this will cause an additional level of trauma and make school feel additionally unsafe. With the utmost respect, I truly believe that we should be spending our time, energy, and money figuring out how to provide high level and high level and sustainable distance learning rather than preparing to go back in person. Many districts in California throughout the Bay Area and Los Angeles County have already shifted to this, and I believe we should follow suit. Thank you for your time and consideration. And we have two more. Good evening. I have been an employee with this district for eighteen years. And this, excuse me, just for a second, let me tell you who this is. This is from Terry Garcia. Okay, I've been an employee with this district for eighteen years, and for the first time, I am nervous about going back to work. I've worked through nine eleven school shootings and now COVID nineteen. Our city is not taking this epidemic seriously. We do not have the info regarding the ages or hospitalizations for local citizens. The increase in positive cases over the last seven weeks are May twenty six thirteen, June twentieth fifty two, July six one hundred seventy three, July twelfth two hundred twelve, July thirteenth two hundred twenty. The state guidelines say that the lowest risk setting for COVID nineteen spread is virtually only learning options, while listed full sized in person classes that lack social distancing as the highest risk setting. People in California must wear face coverings when they are in the high risk situations below. Engaged in work, whether at the workplace or performing work off site, when interacting in person with any member of the public, working in any space visited by members of the public, regardless of whether anyone for the public is present at the time. Persons younger than two years old are not required to wear face covering because of the risk of suffocation. Note, persons exempted from wearing a face covering due to medical condition who are employed in a job involving regular contact with others should wear a non restrictive alternative, such as a face shield with a drape on the bottom edge as long as their condition permits it. Dr. Deborah Burks, a member of the federal coronavirus task force, is asking Americans in hotspot zones to avoid indoor gatherings and reduce them to ten people or fewer. That would mean seven to eight students, one teacher, one to two instructional assistants. Learners in kindergarten and first grade have been home with their parents for a long period now. They will be upset and nervous about coming to school. When they cry to get hurt or get hurt, you cannot comfort them six feet away. There has been public outcry over students being unable to interact with their peers due to distance learning. But with the restrictions that would be in place for students and teachers, their social and emotional learning would be stunted. Students would be unable to adequately work with one another due to the distancing requirements. Our students are older, are all older than two years old, and they should be expected to wear a mask or shield while at school. It should be another safety rule and should be enforced or the students at home. Let parents know the expectations early so they can make their children comfortable wearing a mask for an extended period. I'm immunocompromised and was very ill in March. What happens if I become ill again because students don't wear their masks properly? I understand that airflow is important to slowing the virus. The the classroom I frequently do not, the classroom I used frequently did not have working, heating, or air conditioning from Thanksgiving until school was shut down in March. Several school districts have announced they are starting near only distance learning. I hope that that our school district leaders are going to follow that example. Thank you for your time. I have one more email and then would move to a public comment of the name so far. The last one, this is from Jim Volcheck. Question, if it is necessary to do this meeting via Zoom for safety reasons, what makes you think that bringing students back into the classroom is less, in less than a month, is going to be any safer? COVID cases in our county are worse than ever, and evidence is showing the virus is transmitted via aerosol spreading close spaces. Thank you, Jim Volcheck. Board President Molson, and we have a list of nine members that would like to make public comment. May I move on to that next?
Yes. Dr. Shara, this is Kawaii Bach. You have, we actually have eighteen at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the first nine that I have.
Okay.
Okay. Because I've not asked for the additional comment yet, I thought we'd start with these first nine and then and I'll go back to our board president. So we'll we'll start with, let me give you the names. And then again, if if the people who are listed, if you decide that you're not going to make comment, you can, you can let Kawaii know or put it in the box if possible. First, public comment. And again, public comment will be three minutes, and it is not a question answer. And it is public comment. And there will not be response by board or staff members. We will listen very carefully. Here we go. First will be Ryan Montgomery, followed by Daniel Goldberg and Kim Lozama. Ryan.
Okay, so good evening, board members and members of the cabinet. I wanted to ask some questions for discussion between the school board, the cabinet, and the principals. I understand that Governor Newsom's announcement yesterday definitely complicates things, but I'm hopeful that a solution will be found that is best for GALT and not one that is simply put in place because that's what Grove and Lodi are doing. We are nothing like these cities, yet over the years, we seem to routinely follow their moves and decisions. This is a major frustration for the community. The idea that we need to follow bigger districts' path simply because they are larger, have more students, and have a bigger budget is something I wish the district would distance itself from. We are a great district, and we have done so much to help our youth. However, our youth need us badly. They need stability, they need structure, and they need to get an education that helps them grow. Right now, that is not happening. These kids are on a ship without a sail or rudder. We need to get our youth back in the classroom ASAP. We need to help them and start making up for lost time ASAP. The impact that COVID has had on our kids' education, social emotional health, social skills, and general well being has been immense. The deficits this situation has created will be off the charts. The following questions I have are for you to answer either in closed session or open. As long as the discussion happens amongst you, that is enough for me. The questions are, it goes as follows. An email was sent to district teachers on July tenth, but not parents. Why? The decision to start with students attending two days a week is coming from where? Who made this decision? Because I find it hard to believe that Dr. Shara does not want five days for the students. I've known her long enough to know she wants students in the classroom as much as possible. Parents have taken two surveys, and the majority want students at school five days a week. So this fear, this furthers my curiosity into why two days seems to be the choice. On top of that, the faculty and the students wanted five days as well. If these surveys are going to be ignored, then what is the purpose behind sending them out? At what point are we going to do what's best for the kids? Is there any research data that could be presented to the community to back up two days being a wise choice for the kids? Teachers are not being, are not prepared for distance learning. And when and how will they be trained to do this if they are going to be prepared? Will the three days of online instruction be assigned work or actual teaching? How will teachers teach in person and online at the same time? How will we make things right with our students with special needs? They need to be mainstreamed and have it written in their I E Ps. How will we reconcile this with with all or nothing schedules? Because that's what it will be. Either they're going to be mainstreamed a lot because they have to stay in the same class, or they have to be in a self contained class with their special education case manager. They'll either need to be completely self contained or mainstreamed. These students will be getting the short end of the stick, and this is very frustrating for me. Their individual needs will be brushed aside. If faculty have contact with students in a regimented slash set fashion, why does two days make more sense than five? Well, simply, it's go to school the same day times. How will the district remediate and help students who are behind? And we'll fall back further with this plan of two days, especially like, say, English language learners.
Montgomery, thank you. We're at three minutes. We're over three minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you very much for your time. Daniel Goldberg.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my video is not working, so I'll just go ahead and talk. Clearly, Galt Joint Union Elementary has recognized that the traditional educational model we left in March is not safe in this time of increasing COVID infections. The transitional model does little better in providing the first imperative for Galt Joint Union Elementary to keep the children safe. The transitional model puts our community's children and their families at greater risk medically and puts our students at greater risk emotionally. There will be an increased spread of COVID through transmission with in person schooling. And students whose family members fall ill may believe they are responsible for the transmission of the illness, whether they are or not. The emotional impact could be lifelong for so many children who feel responsible for the illness or death of their loved ones. I myself and many of my students have asthma, which is a pre existing medical condition that leaves us more susceptible to COVID nineteen. I love my job and I love my kids, but I do not feel good about risking my own life and those of my students just to come back to appease politicians and those who have, do not have any background in science. After twenty years of working with six year olds, I can assure you that they will not use masks effectively. Additionally, any return to normal socialization that we are all craving is not going to be possible under conditions of social distancing. There will be no small group instruction, no sitting on the carpet for class meetings or read alouds, and no ability to safely interact and play. Students and teachers will spend their time at school in a state of anxiety. Students and teachers will spend their time at school in a state of anxiety. As we well know, this is not at all conducive to any type of learning. Teachers and other staff will spend a great portion of their time enforcing social distancing requirements rather than instructing. I know that distance learning got off to a rocky start. I lived it, but I have to say that as we progress to the end of the year, we will able to achieve some impressive learning outcomes. My first-grade students were able to receive their small group SIPs instruction. They were able to also have the opportunity to have additional SIPs video lessons. Students wrote paragraphs. We have read-alouds. They completed science units of study and progressed to the last module of our math program. As I was fortunate enough to teach in migrant ed academy this summer, I was able to do all of the above and even incorporate art lessons. Students' parents and teachers became more comfortable with the use of technology. I know that if we are able to start the year with distance learning, we will only continue to see higher levels of achievement and engagement, all while we are safe in our home environments. I feel very confident in saying that I do not see the same levels of achievement as possible if we return to school before it is safe to do so.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
These risks can still be avoided by the simple yet bold decision to postpone in-person teaching until conditions improve. That may be months, even many months, but certainly not a mere four weeks. If GALT can support distance learning for some families and staff, then it must support distance learning for all families and staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And again, I'll just share for our, our members who are making pub, or members making public comment, what I'll do, when you have about thirty seconds left to go, I'll just give you, you have thirty seconds to wrap up. I really appreciate everyone's understanding with the time limit. And I'll move on now to Kim Lozama, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I've timed this and it's two minutes and fifty-nine seconds, so here we go. Here are just three minutes worth of some of the questions that must be answered before we can even consider reopening schools. If students cannot share materials and need their own personal sets of materials, who is purchasing these additional supplies? Teachers have to beg for donations of Clorox wipes and tissues from families and friends just to support cold-flu season. Who's providing all of the new disinfectant materials for classrooms? Are teachers expected to do the cleaning? Will they receive hazard pay? When will this be happening while the second group of students are standing outside? Who's paying for masks and required PPE for teachers? Who is ensuring that these remain stocked? Will students be provided masks? Will they be required to wear masks to protect the teacher? What if they come to school without one or refuse to wear one? What about our youngest students who can't put them on themselves? What about classrooms that don't have windows that open or that have very small transom windows that do not provide adequate ventilation? How are we ensuring proper air ventilation in these spaces? What about immunocompromised teachers? What about those caring for immunocompromised or elderly family at home? Will teachers be forced to choose between their jobs and their lives? If teachers are forced to quarantine, will that come out of their sick pay? What if they have to quarantine multiple times? What if we just have a cold? If we run out of sick days, will we stop getting paid? What if we have to care for a sick family member? What if our own child's school closes or they have to be quarantined and we have to stay home? If we are burning through sick days, where are we getting subs? There have been sub shortages for years. Most include retired teachers who are at risk. What happens when we, when we are inevitably out of teachers? How are we expected to keep up with two weeks of sub plans at a time? Will there be procedures in place for testing students and staff, contact tracing? How will sick students be evaluated? If a student gets sick and has to be quarantined, does the rest of the class have to quarantine? The teacher, the other half of the class, the teacher's family, the student's family, including other siblings? How will the custodial staff be able to keep the school sanitized when it has been a challenge just to get minimal cleaning done? Students are hopefully not being penalized for attendance, will teachers? How are we expected to console a crying child from six feet away? What if our students can't tie their shoes or button their pants? What about when a student falls and gets hurt? How do we help them from six feet away? Why are people using the children are less likely to spread the virus as a backbone of arguments, dismissing the fact that hundreds of adults also work in schools? Why are teachers and school staff being discussed as if they are expendable? How many teachers do you have on the committee exploring safe ways to reopen schools? Why are school boards meeting virtually to discuss the opening of in-person schools? If it's safe for us, then it's safe for you as well. Know that we want to be back in our classrooms with our students, but please do not expect us to be martyrs. Our lives are literally in your hands. We are trusting you to remember that. How long was that?
That's about two minutes and forty-five seconds.
Oh, my gosh, that was good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sunshine Umeda, please.
Okay, I'm here, but I cannot start my video, so can you hear me?
Yes, Sunshine.
And I timed myself too, so I should be good. So hello, my name is Sunshine Umeda, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at River Oaks with school-aged children that go to school outside of our district. I am asking that the board completely review and analyze the safety and health procedures before making a decision about how to start the year. As a classroom teacher, there are times throughout the day that may not seem as obvious but are major points of contact. In the classroom, we are able to keep students socially distant, but we will be in a confined space for long periods of time and often with no or limited ventilation. Students at recess will have difficulty being socially distant, and entire grade levels will be out at the same time, which will cause groups of anywhere between thirty to a hundred students playing in the same area, weather permitting. And this would be considered a large group gathering. And we have the data that show what happens when one person who is contagious is exposed to a large group. There are also bathrooms to clean and monitor, arrivals and dismissals to coordinate with safety measures. And then there is after-school, when staff still have to work together and need to be in a shared space. You will hear plans on how to get this done in the safest way possible, and many people have worked very hard to come up with this, but that should not affect or make you feel pressured about your decision regarding the start of the year. Please hold these plans to a high standard of safety and the true spirit of the recommendations of the Health Department. At all points in the day, are students really six feet apart? Are they keeping groups very small? Ten was what I heard earlier. Students, teachers, home, the moment that they feel symptoms? Will testing be quick and available? Will contact tracing be easy? Because there are very few, because we will continue to have very few points of contact. It is not a failure or a reflection of anyone's hard work if you put in-person schooling on pause and begin the year with a distance learning approach. These are still valuable plans that will benefit us for when it is safe to return to in-person learning. I know everyone here has the best interest of students in mind, which includes their health. There are many ideas and opinions on what is best for kids, which can be confusing because they are all valid. But I feel that we have to turn to the medical field to decide what is best for the community's health and well-being as a whole. There is no clear answer or simple fix. There are obstacles and hurdles with any decision, but truly ask yourself if it is safe or are we just saying it is safe enough? Mostly safe is not going to cut it, and this is the best we can do, won't work either. We cannot open too early while infection rates rise in our areas. We shouldn't scramble to have to roll back another unexpected shutdown because we weren't brave enough, to be honest, with the limitations that we have.
Thirty seconds, Sunshine.
Perfect. Eventually, students will be back at school sites, and the goal is to have as many as we can return healthy, but not until the time is right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, a public comment is from Kathy Loesch.
Hey. Good evening. My name is Kathy Loesch, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Valley Oaks. I've been a teacher in the district for over twenty-five years, and up until now, I've always looked forward to a new school year with great anticipation and excitement. This year is different. This year, I'm afraid, scared, terrified. I'm afraid for the health, safety, and lives of my students, my colleagues, myself, and my family. While I appreciate the hours and hours of research, studying, and discussion that have been put into trying to find a safe model of reopening for GALT, the fact remains that it is not safe for us all to be together in the classroom and on campus. I have read and researched and studied the science of COVID nineteen. I have watched as the number of cases in GALT has gone from the first two diagnosed on March thirtieth to holding steady thirteen cases through the month of May and then absolutely exploding ever since. June twenty-first, fifty-two cases. June twenty-ninth doubling to one oh-four. Today, more than doubling again to two hundred and thirty-one. How can we even consider sending our students and employees back to our campuses in a month? We have students and employees who live in multi-generational households. How can we, with conscience, tell them that it's safe to return to school campuses after months of caution and isolation? How can we assure them that they will not carry a deadly virus home with them at the end of the day? We have teachers who fall into one or more high-risk groups or who are caring for high-risk family members. Did you know that some teachers are strategizing about how they can stretch their sick days to cover caring for a family member if they become ill? Did you know that some teachers are crunching the numbers to see if there's any possibility they can retire early rather than risk exposure to COVID nineteen at work? Did you know that teachers are having conversations with their families about which door to use to enter their houses after being at school all day to best avoid contact with other family members just in case? Did you know that teachers with young children are making arrangements for someone else to care for their children if the teacher falls ill? These are worries and stresses that we haven't seen before because we've never been in this type of deadly pandemic before. We shouldn't be afraid to go to work. The only safe way to reopen our schools is not to reopen them physically, but rather virtually. One hundred percent of our students and one hundred percent of our teachers online. This could be accomplished by delaying the start of the school year for students and giving teachers two weeks to fully research and develop robust and rigorous lessons for our students. Many other school districts in California have already made the decision to begin the year virtually with no option for on-campus in-person instruction. My son Chris, who is now thirty-seven and attended GALT schools, asked me a month ago which option I would choose for him and his brother if they were in elementary school today. At the time he asked, because of the COVID numbers then, my answer was either full-time at home or hybrid. If he were to ask me the same question today, my answer would be absolutely full-time at home. Teachers should have the same opportunity to teach safely as our students have to learn safely. Please consider reopening our schools one hundred percent virtually. Our students and our teachers' health, safety, and lives must be our priority. Thank you.
Karen, you're muted. Yes, thank you. Our next public comment is from Rosella Rolison.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for listening to all of our concerns this evening. My name is Rosella Rolison, and I'm a teacher at Liberty Ranch High School. And I currently have three students that are in the elementary district and one in the high school district. And tonight, I just want to strongly encourage you to consider the option of having distance learning for all students starting the school year. I, I think there's too many unknowns right now in terms of opening the schools safely. And my concern is that the teacher planning days in August could be better spent planning for distance learning because I'm concerned the county is going to force all schools to shift to the distance learning model only because of the increasing numbers of COVID cases in the county and in GALT. And I did fill out the parent survey back when we were asked to fill out what option we would like. And at that time, I was considering having my students return to school. And since I've been monitoring the increasing cases in GALT, I would prefer that my students now do the distance learning full-time. So I just wanted to share that concern with you as both a parent and a teacher in the community that there may be other parents out there that would survey, would respond to the survey differently now that we're seeing an increase in COVID cases and our comfort level may have changed since then. So I just wanted to encourage you with that, and that's really all I wanted to say this evening. Of course, the health and safety, I think, are number one. But also, I think that the planning days and the energy for the teachers could be better spent rather than having to shift at the last minute and scramble. I was one of those teachers trying to shift to distance learning last spring. And so I know that the more preparation that we can have for that, the more effective that that type of teaching can be for our students and our staff. So thank you so much, and that's really all I wanted to say this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Next public comment is from Colleen Wilson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am a second-grade teacher at Lake Canyon Elementary, and I also have two children in the district. And as hard as this decision is going to be, having our opening day coming up in just four weeks, I feel like it's time to make a decision. I know that's hard to hear, but we've had a lot of time, and it is time to decide a direction that we want to start with and let teachers and parents start to plan for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment is from Robert Seagraves.
Looks like I'm still muted.
You're, you're good to go, Mr. Seagraves.
Thank you, Karen. Well, thank you to the board and district personnel and all those that shared today. I really appreciate it. The first thing I want to say is ask you questions. And I mean, start off with saying that I've been a teacher in this district for sixteen years, and I am teaching sixth grade for ten years. And I know, understand that we all want what's best for our students and our teachers and our staff. And the number one thing that we have to keep at the top of our minds and be conscious and aware of is safety. So with that being said, I used to tell people that, you know, GALT, we're this little town, and we've got this cushion, you know, to the south of us. We've got Stockton, and to the north of us, we've got Sacramento. Well, that cushion now is starting to diminish. And so thinking about putting students back in the classroom, are we conscious and aware of what is fully and truly being asked of teachers, staff, and students to do? And especially teachers. Are we saying that teachers' lives are expendable? Kids' lives are expendable? Will we not be able to stop? We will not be able to stop or undo what happens. With increases in adult cases, we mostly only have data about adults and COVID, and that sometimes still changes each day. Unfortunately, there is not enough data regarding kids since they were pulled out March thirteenth. Nothing at this day and time is normal. If we put kids back in the classroom, I won't feel confident saying to my students that they're number one anymore. But then, putting them in those closed spaces when we're asking adults not to be in closed spaces is a huge contradiction to the rationale of controlling this virus and keeping kids safe. We cannot overlook the fact that protecting teachers and staff and students in this pandemic from school outbreaks is an enormous task. It's tough enough teaching under normal circumstances with large classes. It's risky and scary for many to teach during a pandemic. With a virus that has no boundaries, no limitations to age, race, creed, color, or gender, we must not give it power to reach our children as much as we possibly can. I am conscious and aware that I am not prepared, with all that is going on, to accept the consequences of that choice. I tell my students that I love them and I want them to love themselves. But putting them in a classroom where they cannot exercise who they are stifles their growth emotionally, mentally, and physically and spiritually. It's risky. So moving slow to go fast is what makes sense. Starting with distance learning and maybe even moving the start day for school makes a lot of sense. We can determine triggers along the way if we need to move to other models. Observe what's happening in the classrooms for distance learning.
Time's almost up, Mr. Seagraves.
Thank you.
Twenty seconds.
We need to make sure that we are keeping at the top as much as possible, safety, health, and saving lives at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seagraves. Next public comment is from Amy Mangeli.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Amy Mangeli, and this year I will teach fourth grade at Valley Oaks. I want to begin by thanking you for how you handled the introduction of distance learning last school year. I know it wasn't perfect, and definitely nothing compares to an in-person education. But being that, being that that wasn't possible, I was really proud of GALT for the quick turnaround time we offered our students in terms of going from learning in the classroom to distance learning. I want to take a moment tonight to encourage you to make the decision for the 2021 school year based on science and not necessarily based on what people want. I recently found myself doing a lot of just that. My daughter graduated from high school in May. Naturally, we wanted to celebrate her accomplishments with all of our friends and family. We also wanted to host prom for her since she missed that day too. Sadly, we had to make the decision to cancel both events. Sadly, we had to make the decision to cancel both events because science wasn't on our side. My husband and I would not have been able to sleep at night had someone gotten sick because they attended something we were hosting. I asked that when deciding how we will proceed for the 2021 school year, that you choose what is safe. Even if it doesn't win by popular vote. I will be the first to say I don't want distance learning. I don't think anyone wants it. The whole thing feels wrong. Learning and/or teaching in isolation is not desirable in the least. I hate distance learning. I want to throw it away in the garbage can. But I do think it might be the only way we can be safe and can sleep at night, knowing that we haven't made each other sick. I know there are opportunities to sign up to be a distance learning teacher. But I don't necessarily want to sign up for it if the rest of the district is going to be live in classrooms. Because I want the benefit of teaching and planning with my grade level PLC that I have developed relationships with and am comfortable working with. So if the district decides we will be offering in-person instruction, I will do it. But what will that look like? Will students have to wear masks? What if their parents say no? What if they don't come to school in one? Have students continued to quarantine over the summer? Or have they had playdates and sleepovers? Will all staff members have to wear a mask? Have they continued to quarantine over the summer? Or have they come in contact with a lot of people in a variety of ways? As we bring all of these people, children and adults together, what does the cleaning and sanitizing look like? When I was on campus the last week in June to close up my classroom, the sanitation couldn't be kept up with. And we didn't even have students on campus. My in-laws live with and are cared for by my husband and myself. Am I going to bring all of this home to them? I do not envy any of you who are having to be the decision makers in the middle of this pandemic. I just ask that you let science guide you. Thank you.
Board President Malsen, we are at 9:15 at this time and Mrs. Box said that there was some additional public comment.
Do we want to go for another 15 more minutes? Because I think there might be some more board discussion. And then we have our action item. So I think maybe 15 more minutes of public comment.
I think that I, one thing that I would suggest is that if we're still getting people that want to make public comment, that we have to close that window. So anyone that has already put in their public comment, we, we need to hear from them. But as we heard earlier, it went from nine to 18, which, which is fine, but at some point we need to let, you know, our folks, our, our audience know that there is a window to submit your request for public comment. So, you know, we should close that window here in the next minute or so and then take whoever has been patiently waiting. That's my opinion.
Okay, are there still only nine left?
There, the next three actually emailed and requested to speak. They emailed after 12 o'clock yesterday, Monday. The rest of them requested public comment during the meeting.
How many, Kawhi?
Total. We have a total of 11 more. Three, like I said, emailed prior to the meeting.
My recommendation would be to hear the 11 and close the, the request for to submit, you know, a public comment. Just in, you know, just in fairness of for those who were hoping, you know, speak.
Okay, I am in favor of that. Okay, so we'll go with the 11.
Okay. And I have April here and helping me unmute our requests. Our next public comment is from Amy Madison.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Amy Madison. I'm a second grade teacher at Greer and have been a member of this community for 29 years. I can honestly say that I've been in your shoes. I served a four-year term on the Galt High School Board from 2012 to 2016. In that capacity, I had to make some difficult decisions that were in the best interest of students, staff and this community. Tonight, you're faced with a difficult decision and one that requires listening to many voices. I urge you to listen, but to also listen to your gut instinct. Your gut instinct is that hardwired part of your brain and you should listen to it. Take 30 seconds right now to write down gut instinct on your board packet. Then throughout the remainder of these comments tonight, stop and ask yourself, what's my gut instinct telling me to do? Before the recent spike in COVID, I was okay with a blended model, thinking the pandemic was waning. However, my comfort level has changed drastically this week, which has prompted me to speak tonight in favor of online learning or distance learning. For at least the first trimester or possibly beyond, depending upon this pandemic. I'd like to share four thoughts with you in consideration of online learning. First, while returning to school for the social emotional aspect sounds good, the reality of this is far off. The socialization of playing and interacting with each other is what children need. With social distancing guidelines in place and probably masks and other PPE, the benefits of socialization just won't be happening. Second, with online learning, teachers can control what happens in their, or with distance learning, teachers can control what happens in their classrooms. They can control the six feet apart. They can control the sanitizing. They can even control the personal protection equipment of their students. What they can't control is what happens when those students go home to an uncontrolled environment. For example, does student A have an older sibling that isn't practicing social distancing? Or does student B have a family member working in a high-risk job? Worse yet, contact tracing coming back to one of our classrooms or staff members. Third, why not start with distance learning to avoid any disruption of routines? To me, this is paramount. The spring disruption was bad enough for students, parents and teachers. Should a COVID case arise in one of our schools, the noise, the voices and the fear will only get louder.
30 seconds, Amy.
And finally, recognizing that tonight we are teleconferencing and this has already been said. If we can't meet in, in a person and in a room, then why would it be okay for our teachers to meet in their classrooms? As I said in the beginning, you have a difficult, difficult decision to make and you'll be hearing many opinions. But remember to ask yourself, what's my gut instinct telling you to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Our next request is from Galene Gomez.
Hello there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Good evening. My name is Galene Gomez and I am the physical education teacher at Valley Oaks. As we meet here tonight to further review and determine the start of the 2021 school year, there's much on the minds of everyone. There are three points I'd like to touch on during my three minutes. First of all, there is much talk regarding on-campus learning resuming because the parents of our students need to go to work and they need somewhere for their children to go. Please be clear, teachers and school staff are not, nor should they ever be perceived as glorified babysitters. It is not our job to provide childcare. It is our responsibility to provide educational opportunities. Under the circumstances of the rising number of cases in the, of this infectious disease right here in our own community, we should be thinking 100% distance learning. No single person's job is worth another person's life, whether that be classified or certificated. When it is presumed we cannot get haircuts, attend a place of worship, work out in the gym or dine in a restaurant safely, how can we even be considering opening our schools for in-person instruction? The next topic I'd like to address is mask wearing. The CDC's guidelines urge individuals to wear cloth face coverings when in public. One could say maybe we'd be safe returning with face coverings required. Well, we've heard from parents threatening to send their children elsewhere if masks are required. We've heard from staff members who state that they would refuse to cover their faces. We clearly cannot count on people to do the right thing to protect themselves. Or most importantly, others. I see wearing masks as nothing different than adhering to a speed limit, wearing a seatbelt and carrying insurance on your vehicle again to protect yourself and to protect others. Unfortunately, many of my colleagues believe it's politically motivated and refuse to follow these guidelines. Others suddenly have health conditions that don't allow them to mask up, which is pretty ironic. As two of my other colleagues who are severely asthmatic have been told by two separate physicians that they are at greater risk being without a mask than being with one. This again concerns me. We really cannot return to on-campus learning until one, people are forced to follow these health guidelines. Or two, masks are not considered any longer helpful or in containing the spread and contraction of the disease. Finally, as a Valley Oaks teacher, we know the heartbreak and the emotional damage that students and staff can sustain when a teacher passes away. Last year, Valley Oaks lost one of its beloved teachers. It was devastating. Is our district really ready to be responsible for us losing a teacher? Or a student or another staff member? I certainly hope not. While your decisions affect thousands of childrens and children and their families, your decisions also affect your staff. Please do not feel the need to be a trailblazer and be careless in your decision to move forward with in-person instruction. Please listen to the experts, the doctors, the epidemiologists, the scientists. We can move safely with our, safely forward with our distance learning model now until we know it is safe for all of us to return to our sites. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Galene. Our next public comment is from Barbara Woods. Okay, Barbara, are you there?
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I had hit it, but I guess I didn't. Anyway, okay, back to my beginning. Wow, 231 coronavirus cases in Galt as of today. That's a significantly higher per capita rate than the county. Given this information, let, it's really heartening to hear that the district is taking a step back to reconsider how quickly to reopen. My name is Barbara Woods and I would like to speak to the topic of school reopening and safety. I truly appreciate the district considering a much more gradual transition to reopening of schools. Sorry, I forgot to set my little timer here. Being in a classroom with students fits the very definition of an infectious environment. Many people in an enclosed space for a long period of time. Even if students can be seated five to six feet apart, the teacher will not be able to stay six feet apart in order for ride and inviting and caring culture in the classroom. And all will be breathing suspended particles as they pass in between desks. Students and staff in the room will be potentially exposed to 20 to 30 family households worth of pathogens. Considering we've been advised not to gather as families, which only causes exposure to a few family groups. Results could be quite serious. I am concerned. Currently, family gatherings are being cited as a main gathering in the swift uptick in COVID-19 cases. We've been told to not gather as families from different households. Reopening of schools goes against this and other public guidelines for preventing spreading of the infection. Yes, we must balance the need for children to be physically housed in a learning environment with the need for providing safety for our students and employees as well as the community. And also protecting our healthcare system from overload. It would be prudent to go slow and proceed incrementally, as we heard at the beginning of this meeting. I suggest that we consider a delay in the student's start date in order to provide time for training and preparation for the many what-ifs that may arise during the year. Distance learning should be considered as a part of that transition. Perhaps we can have some small groups occurring during that time. Start with partial classes, then once it's deemed prudent and we've had several weeks to see what the results are. Start with partial classes, as is suggested in the transition plan. Allow that to go long enough for us to see what the results are. That would be at least four weeks to have a couple of weeks of instruction and to see what the, what ensued after a couple of weeks of the course of the virus taking place. If results warranted, incrementally, let's open more. Let's proceed very carefully and slowly to protect each other, our students and our community and the healthcare system. As we've heard from many other people tonight, let's put caring and safety first. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next comment is from Shetel Powell.
Hi, sorry. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Sorry, I was just wiping my tears from, from Galene speaking earlier. I apologize for that. I do agree with my colleagues and I'll keep this short, especially for time. In a classroom, I wanted to bring this up. In a classroom that can hold 16 students, we have to keep in mind that we can't fill that class to 16. We have sped students that need to be able to push in. We have specialists that need to be able to push in. We have aides that need to be able to push into those classrooms as well. We have to keep that in mind when we are considering that six feet distance when we do go to that blended model or transitional model. So if the primary class starts with 22, there's no way that all of those 22 kids could be in the classroom with that teacher. Based on the space in the class. But as, as my colleagues have said, I do believe that we need to start with the distance learning first. And then move on to that as time allows. I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you, Shetel. Our next public comment is from Sabrina Fry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Some quick points for you guys to consider. One is in the last 14 days, I can say 16, but I'll say start with the 14 from July 1st to today. We have had, it's started on 123 on July 1st, as of today, 231. Now, my question is, Galt does not have a testing site. And you know, transportation among these families are hard. And so they cannot get to a testing site. So that's my concern. So these numbers have not even dropped one in that time. And 50 that do not have Hooping Call immunizations. They cannot start school from California regulations. And so I have come in a couple of times when I have been off to call parents to try and get them in. And their responses are because of the COVID, they cannot get doctor's appointments. So that's going to be a concern of 150 kids. Of course, there's going to be some that have them that just have not turned them in, but that is a very high amount of seventh graders. Third, is the schools going to be notified if a family in our town has been contacted with COVID? Under the HEPA laws, probably not. So that exposes every staff member that we don't know what is going on. We're, we're just looking at numbers from Sacramento Epidemiology. Next is air conditioning. They have now said that it is not just respiratory, it is airborne. So now you have mask issues with the kids. You know, these kids have little runny noses. Throwing up and then they'll have to come to the health department. We cannot treat these kids at six feet distance. So we are at high risk. We also have procedures that we have to do.
30 seconds, Sabrina.
Okay, so that's another thing. We are surrounded by high, high numbers. We are now more than Citrus Heights and Roseville. So just want to let you know, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Sabrina. We appreciate your comments. Our next comment comes from Tammy Partridge. Tammy, it looks like you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, Kawhi. My name is Tammy Partridge. I'm a special education teacher at Marenga Ranch. I teach I teach kindergarten through 3rd grade. And I wanted to share with you this evening of the results that were shared. One of the surveys that was mentioned by a colleague, that our certificated staff were surveyed, and of the questions, we asked three questions. 78% of the responses were about the health and safety of teachers and staff and children. So those were the staff responding. And we were talking about numbers, we're talking about facts. So those were the responses. Yes, we want to be back in the classrooms, but there needs to be the safety for everyone. And as much as children are our number-one priority, because that's why we're all in this business, we also have to think of our teachers. We also have a list of teachers who have voiced concerns about, as other colleagues I have mentioned, I believe one was Mrs. Loesch, correct me if I'm wrong, please, of teachers trying to figure out, do I need to find a new profession? Do I need to change? What do I need to do in my family to make sure that it's safe? You know, considerations. Do you live in a different facility so that you're not bringing that home to the family members that you're caring for? So there's more concerns than just the children. Jokingly, I thought, you know, if I wore scrubs to work and I brought five pair every day, and I kept changing them every two hours and a clean pair before I went home, maybe I could keep whatever I have at school from coming home with me. Because I don't want it at home, but I don't want it at school either. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Our next comment is from Heidi Friedman.
Good evening, board. Thank you for letting me speak. I hadn't planned on it before tonight, so I'm not reading from any kind of paper or anything. My name is Heidi Friedman. I am a teacher at McCaffrey Middle School. I teach 7th, 8th special education, and I've been teaching in the district for over 25 years. There's a couple of things. One is, whatever we decide, we'd really like to get a timeline. Like Galene has said, we really need to know what's going on. I think not knowing has provided a lot of anxiety in just thinking about the new year. But I just wanted to say, when distance learning happened in March, I had no idea even what Zoom was and had no idea how to present any materials to my students. I did teach extended years this summer and found that when I was able to teach to my whole class and engage them, that it was much better. I had some new skills. I found out that I needed to keep the curriculum moving quickly, but I also found out that they cannot be online for six hours. They could only handle about two. And I'm talking about students with special needs and trying to figure out how to maneuver the computer and such. I was not a fan of distance learning. I would have done anything in February, April, May to come back to school, because I am a teacher, I love students, I miss them to death. But I am too worried about not only the safety of my own students, who oftentimes have compromised immune systems, but also about the effect that, I call this westward movement of COVID as it comes toward our town and how it is affecting us. I would hate for us to go into a transitional model only to have to disrupt it for a distance learning model. Our students, especially mine, need to have some idea of what is happening, as we do as teachers. Our students with autism especially need to have the idea of knowing what is going to happen and have routines. It is very difficult to say, we're going to start this model and then suddenly have to change because COVID has gotten worse. I would love to see us extend our start time maybe to the middle of September, train us, have true training on some distance learning protocols and experience and ideas and resources so that we can provide a much better model. I think we all became better at it as it went along.
About 30 seconds, Heidi, 30 seconds.
Okay, I think we could do it much better if we started. It is not what I want, but it is, I think, the best interest of not only our staff, but the safety of our students and for especially those students with special needs, even though we can't provide them the best service possible that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Our next comment is from Martha Vilma. Martha, are you there?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, yes, we hear you.
Okay. I am a parent of the children in the district and an instructional assistant at Valley Oaks. As a parent, I know that district learning is hard. I hated it as a parent. Did not like it initially as an instructional assistant either. It was all very new and it was thrown at us, and most people are not equipped to deal with teaching their kids all these various subjects at home. I understand that. I understand it will be hard, but I do see it as the safest approach right now. I, as a parent, took the survey back when it was given, and I did say that I wanted my kids in school because I wanted them to socialize. I did not like that they were at home, not visiting, not seeing friends, and I was really worried about their emotional state. I know that that's a very important thing, but as pointed out already, they're not going to socialize under these current circumstances. So that was my main thing behind wanting my kids to go to school versus distance learning. Knowing that that's not going to happen, knowing that our numbers are currently very high, 231, and all the dangers to the kids, the staff, and all of their families, I see distance learning as the best option right now. As an instructional assistant, I have to work very closely with students. Sometimes, I mean, literally, we're face-to-face so that I can see their mouths as they are pronouncing words. We teach phonics. We have to explain to them how to position their tongue on the roof of their mouth, what to do with their lips. This is going to be impossible with a mask on. There is absolutely no way to do this, and I cannot stay six feet away from my students while I'm trying to teach them phonics. So the social distancing and the mask will both make teaching, reading, teaching phonics impossible. Now, I would take a bullet for these kids, as we are taught to do during active shooter drills. We are taught to shield them. We show the kids how to protect themselves. We are taught how to protect them and what to do. But this is beyond that. You're not asking just me to take a bullet, you're asking my family to take a bullet. You're asking all of my friends to take a bullet. You're asking everybody who goes to that school and all of their family members to take a bullet, not just those of us on that campus. This is way beyond anything else that we have ever been exposed to and really unfair to all of us. None of us signed up for this. I don't want to stop teaching. I love teaching kids. I love the difference that I make. But it's not fair for me and my family to have to put our lives on the line, literally, in order to do so. And lastly, you know, for those people that are really gung-ho about the school's opening, we will be needing subs in all areas, so please, by all means, go to edjoin.org and apply as a sub for any position that you wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Our next comment is from Laura Christopherson.
Okay, good evening. My name's Laura Christopherson. I teach at McCaffrey Middle School. I've been a part of our district for over 25 years. And I agree with someone I heard, I cannot believe the amount of anxiety I have over returning for this school year. It's a job I love, and I actually enjoyed seeing my kids over the summer for extended school year, because I love seeing them even through Zoom. I was looking at statistics during the meeting, and I went on to the California Department Public Health site while we were listening. And I looked up the information, because I was curious about our Hispanic community, because we are a pretty much Hispanic and white community. And I was thinking about how this board meeting itself is all in English. I don't know if our Spanish families have access to all this information. What I found is that currently, for all age groups, 55% of the Hispanic population are the ones that have COVID in California, 18% are white. For the Latino population, 0 through 17, 66% of the children are Latino that get COVID or have tested positive, 9% are white. I just worry, are we remembering our entire community when we're talking? I'm worried by everybody. But then when I was looking at those statistics, I just wondered, are their voices, are their hearts, minds, souls being remembered as well? And I think that's all I can say, because I'm going to cry.
Thank you, Laura. Our next public comment is from Brenda Crozier. Brenda, are you unmuted?
Hello, I think we're here now. My wife and I have been deciding who would speak. This is Scott Crozier. I'm a professor of geography up at Conscionus River College. More importantly, I have a daughter in the 3rd grade at Lake Canyon. I did want to respond to a few of the ideas that were presented tonight. At the beginning, there was a comment that parents want their students to be in school. I believe that parents really want their children to be healthy and to be safe, and I think that there's a pathway to that. Trusty Gordon proposed the idea of role modeling face-to-face meetings. Trusty Gordon, no, that is not a good idea, because our physician-scientists, who understand these things better, have told us to stay home and have told us to stay in Zoom meetings. And I agree with those that have echoed this idea that we should not be returning to face-to-face anything, especially with our tender children. Dr. Shower began by outlining the reason when she said, "We are in the middle of a pandemic emergency, and I hope that we're not forgetting that as we're making our decision." Yes, Dr. Shower, we are in a pandemic emergency. That has not changed as we're thinking about where to send our tender ones. Trusty Cagle, you voiced frustration over the news of different decisions that were happening across the state. I would like to express to you our concern and our frustration of every family that has an elementary school kid here in Galt of this idea of four different potential models that might be shifted on a moment's notice. And if anyone gets sick in the classroom, 10 days later, we'll send them all home. It is very frustrating, and so I'm less concerned about what's happening in LA or the Bay Area as I am what's happening here in my own community. I haven't kept count, but it seems that through the public comment, the voice has been provided by many, many of our teachers, and I hope that that can be remembered. I remember being a student in elementary school, and there's one thing that I do remember. That's that if the teacher ain't happy, ain't nobody happy. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you, Trusty Gordon, for extending it for all of us to give our public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Crozier. Our next public comment is from Emily Lewis. Emily, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, wow, this has been kind of emotionally charged tonight. I originally just wanted to say that, and Ms. Wilson actually beat me to it, that my concern as a parent has not been, are we going to school? Are we not going to school necessarily, but what is the decision going to be? In which I've also directed those emails to Superintendent Shower. I feel like we've had plenty of time, and we've made plenty of discussions, and we've just talked in circles. I completely respect the fact that it's a difficult decision, and there's a lot of factors, but at some point, you have to make a decision and go with it so that we can prepare ourselves, we can prepare our children. The teacher have adequate time to prepare for whatever they need to do, whether it be in class or online. And then if we do do online, as a whole school, is there still going to be an orientation as to the new expectations? Or are we going to be on the fly again like we were this last spring? Because, again, that's part of the plan. And then last, I just wanted to kind of address one thing. I was one of those parents that said I wouldn't send my kid to school wearing a mask, and I'm going to explain myself there. I've had training to properly wear personal protective equipment, and for my child, she would not, she's seven years old, she wouldn't wear it properly, my bad. She wouldn't wash her hands right before she put it on. She wouldn't put it on her face and not touch her face. She would touch other things and then reach up and touch her face because she's adjusting her mask, or as she would tell me, "Mom, it's okay. I'll just pull it down every five seconds so I can breathe better." Well, there is the problem, because she'll be touching her face every five seconds, thus putting whatever viruses could be on surfaces, such as the flu, the COVID cold viruses, or whatever else, in her face, next to her eyes, her nose, and her mouth, which can be absorbed into the mucous membrane. So that's the problem I have with that. Now, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I can be flexible. I can stay home with my kids, and it's not a problem. I don't require teachers, as one so eloquently put it, to babysit my children. But I wanted them to go to school because I felt like they learned better in the environment with their teachers, and they got the social impact from their friends. So I feel like we also need to consider their mental health and their social, emotional well-being, as well as their education. And as far as the numbers, yes, I agree that it's a virus, it's a bad virus, but we're looking at numbers climbing, but are we considering that those numbers are also from the start of it? That it's not including false positives, and it's not including those that have already recovered? The numbers are going to continue to climb because we're going to progress through this, through the season, so.
About 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. I mean, we just have to look at the whole picture. Oh, and the last point was, I know people are really adamant about, you know, not being exposed to it, but I wanted to point out, how many of us have left our house? How many have gone to the store, gone to the salon, gone to a restaurant, gone to another family's house, someone outside of your living household, or gone to a friend's house, and you've been exposed to those people that have been exposed to people that have been exposed to people? Are you also expressly concerned in those environments? Or is this only applying to school? It's just food for thought, is all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Our next and last comment is from Heather Wetzel.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for your time. I know it's been a long night, and it's definitely a stressful time for all of us. I am a 5th grade teacher at Marengo Ranch. I am also the current GEFA president and a parent to a 9th grader and an 8th grader here in Galt. During this entire summer, our GEFA bargaining team and part of our executive board have been working weekly with the district to try and come up with a safe and responsible plan for all stakeholders. Our collaboration time has been very meaningful. However, there are just so many factors that are changing on a daily basis. Those changing factors, like increased number of cases in Galt, CDC county health guidelines changing daily, and the governor starting to shut things down again, are making coming up with a solid plan that is safe for all stakeholders nearly impossible. Safety is a huge concern for the majority of our staff members and many families. I do not see a way for us to physically return to school and ensure that our classrooms and sites are safe. I am recommending that our district start with distance learning, with the hope that we can move into a less restrictive model, such as the blended or modified traditional models, presented in the matrix when it's safer to do so. Even with social distancing and annotation, there are just too many variables that are out of our asking us to return to our classrooms with even half this could be a medical nightmare for some of our members, many of our staff, as well as creating a situation of very high anxiety. We all want our normal classes back, but at this time, things are just not normal. Know how much verbiage we put into a contract or a plan, the risks are as a parent, I understand needing or wanting back in the classroom, but I also would not want to be the parent whose child causes a class to shut down or to spread COVID to somebody that has medical or to spread COVID to somebody that has medical issues. As teachers, we want to fix things and make them better. We want our students to know we care about them, and we are there for them. At this time, the best way to show we care is by keeping them safe and helping them to adapt and persevere during difficult times. We need to have a solid direction so teachers can plan and prepare for not only the new school year, but also for the unfinished learning from the end of last year. Parents need to be able to make plans as well. None of us are distance learning experts, but at least now we have experience. Starting with distance learning would not only help with safety, but would also help teachers implement the tools they already have acquired to create, plan, and teach meaningful lessons in a consistent and safe model. I hope and pray that the curve flattens soon, and we can get on track to remove restrictions and get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Board President Moss, and that completes our public comments. Other comments that I received in the chat room, I will share with Dr. Shower for consideration in a future FAQ.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who took the time to speak and write very meaningful and powerful things. I feel that's a lot to unpack right now. So I have a question. And I wrote it down because it trying to think how to word it. I can't believe I didn't think about this because I'm kind of up and up on stuff like this. But how is our district, if we go back into the classroom, even with a hybrid model or AB schedule? How are we handling HIPAA laws? How are we protecting our staff or our students who may or may not, who could possibly be sick, and then they're out? Is there a plan for that?
I was thinking the same thing, Gracie, when someone brought that up. I wrote it down.
I wrote it down. I'm like that. Why?
We will be addressing that with our district nurses tomorrow. I will make sure that we address that, and we'll be able to talk to you more completely about it in the next meeting. Privacy.
I was wondering about the work site specifically plan, Lois Yon, and what is, what would be part of, what would help employees also understand about that, including management?
Yeah, no, HIPAA laws still definitely apply to the coronavirus. There are certain situations to where we can't require specific COVID testing, but we can require a medical note just stating that an employee can come back to work. We, of course, can't use names. We can't disclose anything we know about symptoms or diagnosis of an employee. All those laws still are in place.
So this is a very silly question, I'll admit that upfront. Because when I was in elementary school back many years ago, they would do lice checks on us. And those that had lice would not come back into the classroom. So everyone knew that child had lice. They don't do that anymore. They don't send that child home, depending on if it's like nits or this and that, because of the privacy laws. So a student or a staff member comes down with COVID, and they don't come back to the classroom. It, I know I was comparing apples to oranges, but I don't see how that's protecting anybody. Because it's kind of everyone's going to know.
I mean, that could be the case under these circumstances. I mean, if somebody goes home, you might question why, you know, why they're not returning back to work or returning back to class. One might jump to the conclusion of the reason why. You know, we deal with that too with confidentiality, with student discipline when things happen with students. And, you know, you can't talk about, you can't disclose discipline, you know, you know, consequences. But then everybody jumps to a conclusion why the child's not at school the next day, like that. I, I think we won't be able to stop maybe some conclusions that people might, or assumptions that people might jump to if a staff member or a student is absent for a while.
Board members, any, any comments? That was a lot.
So our next board meeting, is that Wednesday, next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, so I I think we need to make a decision by next Wednesday in terms of what is the direction the district is going to go in. So people can plan, district can plan, teachers can plan. I think we've heard that in public comment. I am sure that I think individually, you probably feel somewhat the same way. I just, I probably should clarify something I said earlier in terms of meeting, meeting together, you know, meeting together physically. And, you know, there's, the point I was trying to make is it is somewhat ludicrous for us to have, to expect, you know, teachers, students to go back to school in person when, when we're doing this virtually. It's, I think one thing we have to remember is that part of the reason the spike has happened is that large groups, from what we're, what's been reporting, large groups have been getting together. We're looking at reopening schools, large groups are getting back together, and what have it. You know, you know, are we repeating history in that regard? And to what degree should we be sensitive to that? But I also wanted to to say, you know, a couple of other things. One is, you know, to what degree we it's going to be phrased incorrectly. But, you know, we have essential workers. We have, for lack of better words, essential students, high-need students, students that, that whether they're learning phonics and they need it, you know, and having some kind of, something that we need to really pay attention to towards, you know, maybe our special needs or different learners. I think we need to be thoughtful about those segments or populations of students that may be greatly disadvantaged or have a harder time adapting to, to potentially distance learning. There was a comment about how disruptive it is, and I think that there's, it's a really good point to make that it is less disruptive to start from a distance learning model and integrate back in than to integrate in, pull out, and pull back in. I, you know, I wonder, I think I mentioned it earlier. I question the adaptability. I think that's a lot to ask for, for teachers, for principals, for school districts to, you know, to adjust on, on the fly. And maybe some of that is, you know, if you do, if the decision is to go distance learning, maybe some of the migration starts with the very small segments of those populations I mentioned earlier. And, and how do you maybe, you know, address face-to-face in very, very small groups, you know? Maybe that's something for the district to, to consider. And then finally, you know, I think it's imperative to really understand if we were to do a distance learning model, what exactly does that look like? Are we streaming instruction online to where it looks? Looks and kind of feels like a classroom, you know, how different does it look before? I, I think as a board member, I think parents who kind of want some kind of assurance of what that looks like, someone mentioned, you know, having orientations if we were to do distance, you know, learning. I think that's, that's a critical piece as well. But I think, you know, we do need, need to look and make in a decision next Wednesday would be my recommendation. And I would, you know, I would voice on the, on the side of caution and look at really extending out the start date. Because if, you know, we have to make this right, whether it's having a more fortified distance learning or having this, you know, AB schedule, if that were, if that's what the, you know, what the majority of the board wants to do, we, I think there's, there's more time going on. And, you know, unfortunately, when you had fourteen cases back at the end of May, that's a different conversation than having over two hundred cases in the middle of July. And it changes the conversation, you know, it changes the whole momentum, I think, of where a community and as a school board has been. I think, you know, I'd like to apologize to parents for feeling like, like they've been left in the dark. But this is just the unpredictability of this, of this virus. And hopefully, you know, my colleagues will agree that, that we need to make a decision here by, by next week to give some clarity to our community. Thank you.
Those are excellent points, John, and I tend to agree. I mean, I was very much one of those, I mean, I'll admit it, to have my child go back to school. She's an only child. She needs the socialization. She's very active in the participation of the committees and clubs on campus. However, if she were to get sick and bring it back to my parents, I, she would be heartbroken, makes you want to cry, I'm sorry. I'm not feeling too good, haven't been this whole week because of this. I'm okay with, oh, I never get emotional, sorry, guys, making a decision next week and tabling the action item that we have that we were supposed to do tonight. And I'm okay with, you know, looking at models to start off slow to go fast when it's safe to do so. I'd like to hear from the other board members.
I just wanted a point of clarification because I think the action item was about just, just to proving that these were what the five, you know, potential ideas were in that we could move from one direction to the other. I mean, that was, that's what the board is not about.
I'm all over the place.
No, it's all right, but you know, if you know, saying that, I don't know, you know, to what degree. I mean, I think this is, this is a good guide. I don't know to what degree we need to approve it because I wonder whether there is something that's going to substitute one of these other ones as we move on. You know, this AB schedule was something that was a last-minute, you know, addition. So I don't know what, by approving it, what the value would, would be, whether it's to give the superintendent direction in terms of if we had to move or shift, you know, that there's some guidance there. Probably need some help on that, superintendent.
Yeah. Karen, would you mind clarifying if we were to approve this, or do we need to?
Well, I was just going to say, we, it, there doesn't need to be action. I would like to get board direction in terms of are we on the right track when we have to prepare for everything and anything, given these, you know, conditions that we're under. And, I mean, there could be action, and Mr. Gordon is correct, is that, I mean, it's a model. It's a work in, it's a transparent picture of how we're trying to work through conditions that we can't control. And, you know, again, it could be approval for us to, you know, work to advance that model more clearly and then possibly focus in on, you know, on some of the areas if needed at this time, or that could come next week. But the other piece too is just, again, the aspect of, of moving forward with registration and information on the home distance learning program for parents who have expressed that initial interest. That would be helpful to get at least board direction that we can move forward with that next week.
Is that something that we need to take action on, or do you just?
I think direction is fine. That, that you're, again, that, that, you know, again, you, that you're supportive of us moving forward to, to work with families that are ready to sign up for that.
Okay, I know I am. I've had a few parents ask me how they register, so I didn't. So my direction is yes.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. I mean, if there are people, families interested in distance learning, let's, let's get the wheels turning here now and get that going. And then in terms of the rest of the other students, you know, we, we can't make a decision tonight because it's not on the agenda for us to make a decision on, you know, which way to go. But again, it's, you know, I saw Grace kind of feel the same way as, as myself about that we need to make some kind of decision next week. You know, I haven't heard from, from the other colleagues, and maybe it's because I haven't shut my mouth, so I'll do just that.
Well, in regards to the plans themselves, you know, I concur. I approve of the plans, you know, they're all conditional. And, you know, so they're contingencies. And, you know, you, you know, we've said from the beginning what our preference, what our priority was. And, you know, that's option A. And if that doesn't work, then we look at options B, C, all the way through to the end. So in terms of how we would go back to school based on different conditions of this virus, you know, I can say that these are good plans, and I can support us going with any of those plans if those conditions are met, or, you know, if those conditions occur. So I think, you know, you guys put in a lot of work, and these are very good plans. So, yeah, I mean, in terms of board direction, you know, I can, I can say that, that I approve of these plans as plans. I mean, does that make sense to you, John? I mean, I
Yeah, I guess the only thing that, that, that I don't maybe is not really settled with me is that when we talked about online, that really what triggers that would be, you know, the California stay-at-home order. And right now, we don't have one, but, you know, I could tell you that I have a certain feeling or position of where, where I would like to see the district go, which may not, you know, and I think we need to, you know, to look at distance learning as, as a conservative approach. But don't want to be, don't want to necessarily vote on it to say that, that we can't go in that direction because the stay-at-home order is not triggered. When the rest of the board may decide, you know, yeah, maybe we need to go online. So that would be my, my only concern about, you know, approving that is as you lock yourselves kind of in, into something that you may, as a board, may decide later, it's, it's not a good, you know, well, we didn't necessarily want it that way, but yet we took action to say that that's how, you know, that's how we're directing the superintendent.
I don't know. I see those plans, again, as being conditional. We've already said, under optimum conditions, right? Everybody is back in school. But, and that seems, you know, that's, and that seems unrealistic. It doesn't, it does not seem likely that that's going to happen. So we can say, okay, that's not likely to happen. But if it did, that's where it would be. I mean, if everything radically changed between now and August thirteenth, and we still said August thirteenth is the first day of school, and everybody's going to be in the classroom, and it's, you know, it's going to be great, fine. If that doesn't happen, what was our next choice? And then we said, you know, then that may be a staggered start, or, you know, excuse me, an AB schedule where we split the school in half to try and reduce risk. Now, if we're in a situation where we can't do that, what's next? What's next? And so in terms of planning, you know, because again, you know, we always have to get to the end of the school year, and we have to have that continuity of learning. And so, you know, this year really is going to consist of multiple paths for learning for children. You know, it's, I mean, unless you start out with, you know, completely online at the beginning of this school year, and you carry it all the way through the entire school year, it is unlikely that any child is going to have one path all the way through this entire school year. And that's why we've talked about being nimble and flexible. And that's what this planning is really needs to be about, is the ability to adapt. that's what this planning is really needs to be about is the ability to adapt to the current situation, the changing situation, and as it change, move in the direction where we want to be. And we know where we want to be ideally. So what steps do we incrementally get ourselves to there to get to that point and what conditions create those opportunities for changes? But in terms of the plan, I still see the plans are acceptable as plans. You know, plan is not a commitment.
In terms of, I guess, I guess my, my concern is if we approve this and we decide next week that we're doing distance learning. Right? Based on this plan, that, 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 that can't happen because what's going to trigger the online distance learning is a, is a mandate. So that's why, you know, based on how I'm interpreting this. So everything from, you know, that I'm reading from the brief description in terms of what the triggers are.
You know, clarify the triggers then. So we probably should include there in there the language, right? State mandate or board action. Because yes, we still have the ability as a board to decide, you know, if they, if we come down to it and in our judgment, we should not go back in the classroom and we should go exclusively online, we as a board have the right to make that decision. We don't need to be told by the state. And I agree with you. That is a decision that we as a board can make and we should probably put that, you know, include that language in that portion of the plan. I agree with you there, John.
And, yeah, within the brief description, that would need to be changed because it says, you know, state or public health mandate versus the other ones is just district discretion and, and decision. So.
Well, I agree with you, John. I agree with you. We, you know, so, so there's our, there's one piece of direction there, Karen, is we need to slightly change that language. Because yeah, ultimately we have to make those decisions. So, so I, yeah, I agree with you, John.
Because sometimes if I could share this scenario and I, I just want, I just want to thank everyone who's helped us try to develop things to bring forward. We've been trying to use language to distinguish the nuances between like home distance learning versus online. But what can happen sometimes is, is it could be a recommendation from the county level. And so then that, you know, that's why that asked after bringing board decision to that would help because it could be a recommendation. We're bringing data to you and as a board, you're deciding, okay, no, yes. It's like, we've got to make that call.
And we need to reserve the right to be able to make that call without being directed by the state or county.
And, and we could make that, make that change.
And Karen, that the language that both Tom and, and John just mentioned probably should have been added. It just wasn't added as it should have, but yeah.
That's why we're having this meeting tonight. But you're right, Karen. I mean, the point is it was nuanced. And as it was presented, it made sense because it's like if the state says, everybody goes, oh, this is what happens. And that's, and, and, and your use of the color red for the, for that particular, you know, block made sense because it's, you know, it's, it's the red letter zone. So, so, but I think, you know, we, we, you know, we just need to fine tune that a little bit. And, and like Cleo says, we just need to include that language. It's always be more discretion.
Is while it's red, it's like, hopefully it will, will look, uh, what that would look like, um, if that is where the starting point may need to be, um, is that it would not look like what it looked like early March.
Correct.
It's, it's because of, again, what we learned and, and it, and again, the time and training and collaboration that we need to get to continue to do and do in August so that if, if that is a starting point or we do have to toggle to that, there's greater quality in that, um, what we'll call that online model. Um, because again, we could have put distance learning there also because it is distance learning. You know, but we were trying to distinguish it from the home that, you know, it's a terminology piece, you know, and that's why, again, it is a plan. We just, when we're working with you and other stakeholders, it, sometimes it's helping us kind of get at the terminology to use. So it's, you know, I mean, I, I would ask the flexibility in our terminology tweaking on this too. But again, it's just, it's a, it's a way for us to, um, you know, keep moving to prepare for everything and anything at this point.
Okay. Well, John, John brought up a good point earlier that, that I want to ask you about because he talked about if, if we have to make the decision to, you know, if we do make a decision to transfer to online only, do we need to push back the school start date? Because of all this planning and preparation and, you know, it has been about being flexible, do we really need to adjust a school start date? Regardless of the, of which mode of teaching we, we engage.
You know, and, and just some of the settings. Yeah, that I've been in, aside from some of the public comment we heard today, is that, that is something, um, that is something to think about. Um, that could be beneficial. It would take working with our employee unions on that. And also I would just say the aspect of communication with our high school district as well. You know, it, you know, just to coordinate what can be, as you know, right now, we're about a week apart in the start date. And with, with reopening and if we move forward and the school district did not, that's just something to think about. But there is a difference between, um, you know, what may be needed for younger children, um, you know, and, and what, what the elementary district faces. But at the same time, it's just, um, you know, we're all in this together. And so how families, you know, if we couldn't coordinate that start date within a week or so, you know, is what that would mean.
Do you feel that the start date, if the district were to go to distance learning or online to begin with, do you feel that the start date is, is still as relevant as opposed to physically starting?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm going to turn this to our director of curriculum. Again, going fresh with conversations with teachers today with Cleo, what, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that if we can delay the start, John, it would really put us in a better position to launch a stronger distance learning program. Um, although the word training is, you know, just a simple word. It, it takes a lot of collaboration, coordination to pull training for all of our staff. Um, so I would want to have a training for teachers, training for classified staff, um, some kind of training or support for parents, uh, training for children before we, we launch anything. So if, if we could work with both unions, I think it's in the best interests of the children and, and our staff to start a little later if possible. Because we're looking at four weeks.
Yeah, I,
A whole lot.
I, I would be curious to see if there's any interest, you know, right after Labor Day, if that's even, I know it's, that throws it out even further out, but and there's, obviously there's conversations that need to happen. But, um, and we need to make a decision, obviously. I want to speak for, for the group, but there's just been so much wrangling and shaping and reshaping that, and the hard work really leadership has, has done to try to really accommodate and really be responsive, which , uh, really, we probably haven't really stated enough that, you know, the work that everyone has put into. But we, you know, we want to be responsive and, and, and provide good direction here and, and try to be as, move in a way that is optimal as, as possible, given the situations.
And when you look just at a, at a calendar, if, um, well, knowing right now that most likely we will need to wait until next week, that, that will give us 15 days to prepare if the start date remains as is. So each, each week that we, um, wait a little longer, it just cuts the number of days for planning.
I think John's muted.
Wes is muted. I see you want to say something. Wes?
All right. Yeah, I, I have a comment or question. Keep hearing about the extending the start date. So maybe start pushing back that, uh, Labor Day. The, uh, teacher contract, right, is 180 days, 182 days, correct? Is that right?
When, is it 183?
183. So if we push, if we push the start date past Labor Day, does that mean school still gets out on the first week of June or is we going to get pushed back?
No, we would extend the days because there's no waiver from the state on the number of instructional days. So we would still need to have 180 days. But do you know, Wes, that there are three professional development days that we could, that could give us more flexibility? So if we could just rethink the calendar a bit, it could help. But yeah, definitely if, if we start late, then we end late.
So are you still, I'm sorry, are the teachers still expected to show up on their original start date?
I would still, of the, you're looking at the 10th, correct? August 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, Wes, because we would want to use some of that time for training. Um, we would have to, again, think about the funding source for that. But I, I would think that the start date for the teachers would be the same. The start date for the children would not, but it would extend the end date in June.
Yeah. And so that, that's what I'm kind of getting, trying to get at is where is the extra funding going to come in to, uh, to pay for those training days?
Yeah.
If we do.
Yeah. Lois, would you talk about?
Yeah, sure. We do have, we have the CARES funds. We have $2.8 million of emergency federal funds. Most of that has to be spent by December of this year. So we would be able to use some of those funds for professional development for certificated or classified staff. So if we added days, we would use our, our federal emergency funds.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Couple, uh, Gracey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So I would suggest then on this continuum of learning phases that we slightly amend it, I would say that the online distance learning model would stay in position one, but the distance learning, which is out in position five on the right margin, that I think would be more properly placed over alongside of online learning. So in other words, online business learning and then next to it would be business learning plus versus sort of amendment to indicate that it's, it's an upgrade from the, uh, current online business learning column. That's number one. Number two, in ducking from Tom's point, I think it should be clearer to people about when the decisions to move up towards a more aggressive approach in light of COVID-19, moving towards the traditional model, when and how those triggers would occur? What's the articulated standard for moving from, uh, a distance learning plus to a blended A B or something akin to that so that it's clear, particularly for the students and parents, but also the teachers and educators?
Yeah, we need to mute. Um, we need to mute.
Yes, I'm working on that.
So anyway, with those two suggestions in mind, uh, one, moving business learning plus the current blue column, uh, in, uh, the fifth position over to alongside of the online business learning in the red. So in other words, five would become two and two, three and four would bump over to the right and become three, four and five. Does that make sense to you, Karen?
Yes. Um, and again, I, I think where my mind is going is there's this aspect of distance learning that is the home program that parents would start registering for possibly next week. And again, the distance learning that depending on what the conditions are, um, you know, again, if it's just, it just, we, we can't be on campus, that, that would remain in the first, the first column.
Correct, that's my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I would just say this. Um, I know that in some conversations with um, other regional and state leaders is that, um, that's part of something that we would love the state or county to, um, come up with, which would be, what we call these triggers, you know, in terms of when you, you know, you know, how you could work on that. And I was just thinking out loud that if the state or county does not come up with those, that perhaps, again, we can work on those and confer with the county in terms of our reasoning on that. You know, such as having to do with the number of cases engulfed, you know, what it's looked like in a two week period and just, and just working that through with public health locally. If again, at the county and state level, they're not ready to put something like that out.
Okay. A broader way to approach it, uh, would be then to say if not otherwise prohibited by mandate from the state or county, uh, board discretion, uh, will be provided if that's the sort of a generic that you want. If you can get specific and you're comfortable with that, and then we could put the sort of specific items or lists down under each one of those sort of more aggressive approaches. Once we can check all those particular boxes of those criteria list, then we have a board discussion about being more aggressive and moving things to, uh, towards the more traditional model. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Ask a clarifying point. Matthew, I'm sorry, can you, can you share again your thought process as far as moving the blue to the first column right next to the red? I, I didn't catch that. I'm sorry.
Sure. Uh, can you hear me okay, Cleo?
Yes.
All right. So if you look right now at the, the first column, online in red, uh, home. All right. That's what we had, uh, immediately after, um, the shelter in place order came out from, uh, the governor's office, correct?
Yes.
So if you look over here at distance learning in column five in the blue column, you know, we're calling the first column, online distance learning. And I've heard it, we've referred to that a couple of times now. And then we have column five, which is just by itself, distance learning. Uh, it's more than just column one though, right? It's, it's, it's augmented. Are you with me so far, Cleo?
No, that's where I lost you.
All right. So, uh, looking column one, online, home, five days per week.
Yes.
Then go right over to column five, distance learning, home, five days per week. You see that so far?
Yes.
All right. Then you go down in, still in, uh, still in column five, it says school, weekly check-ins and, uh, set schedule. You see that?
Yes.
That's not there over in column one, correct?
Correct.
All right. So if both of these are distance learning models and one just seems to be slightly more aggressive than the other with additional, um, augmentations to it, doesn't it make sense instead of having it following the traditional model?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I see it now. Yes.
Matthew, Matthew, may I add something though? The, uh, the red, the on, the home on the red side, the online, that is a transitional model that we'll be moving out of as health conditions improve. But the reason that we place the distance learning, the home study, the old home study model over on the right because it's not, it doesn't follow, um, state or public mandates or district direction. That's an alternative parent option of choice. So that one will stay consistent throughout the year regardless of the health conditions. The red, orange, yellow and green are phases that they're, you know, for the changing conditions. The distance model at the other side, the blue, that is not a changing condition model.
Okay. That makes sense. Uh, Donna, thanks for that clarification. So that's sort of, um, a silo unto itself, correct, Donna?
Thank you. That's a good way to describe it. Also where it says school, weekly check-ins and set schedule, this needs to be a little bit revised from our, um, our newest model. So we'll, we'll make some tweaks to it and make it a little more clear because I can see that calling them both say home on them. Um, we just need to flesh out a little more detail on the online on the red side. But like I said, keeping in mind that this is an alternative educational choice that parents will make for the year.
Yeah. And just, I, I was just gonna say even Yeah. And just, I, I was just gonna say even from a format, it just could, we could take the blue distance learning column and just even separate that to the right, not hook it. Not, not hook it to, from online to blended to modified traditional and traditional, which are transitional to traditional. I mean, that's a format thing, but I still, again, I'm still, I, 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 it's the terminology of online, which is distance learning also. So we just have to think about that. We just have to think about still the terminology a bit.
Right. Uh, I think that's important here is the clarity because there are going to be parents that, uh, once, uh, things become clearer for us. They're want, they're going to want to make sure that, um, they're clear about their choice. If currently number, uh, column or five is available and they forego that opportunity and they find themselves somewhere else.
Yes.
Could it be a problem?
Yes.
Anyway, something to think about. And, uh, if we can address it in a way that, uh, is a little clearer, that'd be helpful, I think, to everyone involved.
No, thank you. Because again, our plan is to find out who the, you know, to have parents, um, that would like to have the distance learning for the full year to get the registration going next week. And so having, um, you know, the, the format of this just edited and more clear that, that will help them with that decision. And we do plan to do some type of, um, you know, orient informational session too, that we can verbally kind of talk it through in English and Spanish too.
I'll add it to the FAQ as well.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. Or direction. It's all good feedback and direction.
Uh, second point, since we're, uh, we're taking comments right now from the board members, um, I think we have to look at that August 13th date seriously, uh, in light of the fact that we're at 30 days and counting now. And with, uh, so much still as yet unclear with potential, um, recommendations, if not requirements coming down from the county and state level shortly. It's going to become even more compress and difficult for important decisions to be made by, uh, district staff with input, uh, from, uh, both those major unions as well and coordination with them. So, uh, I think we need to consider the idea that, um, if we can push that date out comfortably, it would be the benefit of most people here. Um, it would help see where, uh, the trends are going in the COVID-19 situation. What information we're getting from the county and state level, uh, the ability to analyze it and see what we can use that's helpful for us to make decisions and then make the best decision we can, uh, with the time available, with the information we have. Does that, does that, I think that calls for board discussion, but that's the way that I'm leaning, um, right now, that I think if we can just try and get a little more time here before we make a decision that, um, can accommodate as many of the needs as possible reasonably.
I agree. A decision is to be made soon and Karen, do you guys have enough direction that we could possibly make the decision next Wednesday at our regular board meeting?
You know, let me, let me work on summarizing, um, the direction. Okay? Is that, um, is that the the plan that we have in terms of planning for everything and anything that has, um, models depending on health conditions or the standalone distance learning that the board, um, is, you know, again, the, the direction is that we're on the right track with that. But we need to, um, look at some edits to that that would more clearly communicate. You know, what they mean and also consider, um, okay, I'm just going to use the wrong terminology, but like trigger points in terms of what the criteria may be. Um, that of where we would start based on the conditions, you know, trying to look at how we can pull that into it. That, um, the board is, is, uh, provide a direction that we need to, you know, possibly make a decision by next week. Um, about, you know, what, what the starting point is going to be and whatever that is, we may need more time to really make it happen. So it could be that, um, August 13th may be the first day, but it may be later than that. And I, I, I think, um, I mean, that's, that's what I, that's what I heard for direction. And then to give you-
Yeah.
I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Just in, in, you know, making a, a decision on either it being A B or, or online. I think, you know, uh, coming out of the meeting, you know, we need to make a decision on that.
Okay. That, that's really appreciate, um, the direction on that. And then again, I know that there was discussion about the number of, of, uh, days for children. And, uh, you know, possible for us, we, we did, uh, receive more information on, uh, budget today. But it's how, uh, if we were to look at moving the date or adding some additional professional development days, just how to make that work. So that we do have staff fully prepared in the time that they need so that we can, whatever we end up doing, whether it be distance learning or A B, we're ready to roll. You know, with, with the time that's needed to do it to the highest quality and safest way possible.
I agree.
Yeah, I think, uh, moving the, uh, decision issue, uh, and having it, uh, one way or another next Wednesday will be good. The idea of moving up that August 13th date was to make us a little more comfortable, um, because at that point we'll have three weeks left to implement whatever decisions made on the 13th.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, not the 13th, uh, next Wednesday rather, for the August 13th issue.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank everybody. This has been a night.
Really appreciate the direction moving forward. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
But I really appreciate all the input from the, from the board members. Those are some very good points, um, great direction. Um, fabulous public comments from, from all sides. Much appreciated. Um, it's a lot to unpack and think about. Is there anything else? Cause we're not taking action tonight, correct? We're, okay. Making-
You've given some very, very clear direction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. It's been, thank you all. It's, I really appreciate all the hard work. I know that our district administrators and our site administrators and even our teachers have all been in flux and they've been stressed out, anxiety, and they've been, um, are really working hard to, you know, educate our, our, our youth and the, none of these decisions are easy. And so I appreciate everything everyone's doing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
If there's no more discussion, then, um, I think it's safe to say we're adjourned. We done?
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hey guys, have a good night.
Thank you so much. Good night. Okay, I know that we're recruiting here too, huh? Yes, we are. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and leave this. I'm just going to leave for now. I'm still, I won't say, but, uh, anyway, I'm just going to go ahead and sign out. Okay. Super job. Thank you. Thank you, April. Thank you, Min. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.